Here it comes. Councilmembers, it's a little after 5:00. We're about ready to get started.
Hi.
Well, that was short-lived.
Sorry.
I got to make it nice.
You did. Did you bang the?
I didn't. See, I even moved it to the left side.
Oh, God, you're a lefty. Hi, Mindy. Um, I'm doing good. Okay, hold on a second. Chancellor May is here. Why is Chancellor May not? Okay. Yes. Of course. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please read the roll so that we might establish a quorum?
Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Sheneer, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Carr, Mayor Steinberg,
Here, thank you.
Councilmember Guerra,
Here.
And I expect Mayor Pro Tem Ashby any moment.
She'll be here in just a moment. Very good. If we could all rise, I would ask the Chancellor of the University of California, Davis, a great friend to the city of Sacramento, Gary May, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Chancellor May. We're going to recognize you in just a moment, but we welcome you. We welcome all the members of the public here. We begin tonight with a special presentation recognizing civil rights heroine Rosa Parks and, of course, her immense contribution to the civil rights movement. This is being brought forward by both councilmembers Hanson and Jennings, and I would allow either of you to take the floor and go first.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Jennings and I flipped a coin and I got to go first, and it's a real honor to have this moment. I first just want to say we have some very special guests in the House. First is Michael Harris, who from the Rosa Parks Committee contacted us, and this is his 21st year recognizing Rosa Parks' birthday, and he was telling me the story about when they passed the legislation, they were able to get Secretary of State Bill Jones to sign it, even though it was after hours, and he came in to sign in February 4th because today is the actual day of her birthday. She'd be 107 to create this day, and that number is special to me because my great-grandmother lived to 107. So I think what it would be like if we still had Ms. Parks with us today to carry on her work, but also, it's not lost on me. We've got Old Blue outside, which is a regional transit bus from the era of segregation and the busing strikes and boycotts, and as the new Chair of Regional Transit, the acts of civil disobedience that led to the transformation, not just of busing, but the rising up of so many people on behalf of their own rights is just, it's something that we can never forget. And while we celebrate Black History Month today, and we've just heard Gwen Ifill is getting her own stamp, and we're celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday a couple of weeks ago, and that day, this is just a piece of the overall picture, but the work isn't done. And so it's really an honor to have you here, Michael. It's an honor to have Chancellor May here on behalf of UC Davis. We also have our very own Cassandra Jennings, who is a leader in the community, working across disadvantaged neighborhoods to help them realize their potential. Thank you, Cassandra, for being here. Ms. Betty Williams, who is the president of the Sacramento NAACP and is tireless. I don't know that she sleeps, but she certainly is present all the time. And then LaChelle Dozier, who is here as the head of S H R, but I learned today, I didn't know this, was also from Alabama, just like Ms. Parks, and I think Chancellor May, Georgia, yeah. I knew I wasn't quite right, but I just think it's a unique combination of people and forces that allows to have this moment, and I want to thank Mr. Jennings for being willing to co-host this with me. I'll just turn it over to him for a moment before we let the speakers come up.
Thank you, Steve, and I want to thank you for your role in allowing this resolution to come forward. Michael may have been working in this for 21 years, but Michael comes from good stock, and if it wasn't for his mother, Mary Harris, Michael would not be doing this work himself. And so I appreciate you for what you've done, but I also appreciate your mom for putting you in a position to continue to lead the charge, to follow up on the work that she's been doing for many years. So today, we do have the opportunity to recognize an incredible woman who is probably one of the most legendary figures in the civil rights movement, and the thing that I hope that we teach all of our children is her courage to stand up for what she believed, her tenacity to fight against everything that was not right, and it was more than just not giving up her seat on the bus, as you'll learn when we read the resolution, but the legacy that she leaves behind for all of us to follow. That's something I want all of our kids to know every single day, that we teach them how important this is. So we have a lot of speakers that will be speaking.
Come on down.
And we'll ask them to come on up so that we can...
If I make, may I make a?
Please.
Comment is?
Yeah.
I got him.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just going to invite everybody up. Come on up, please. Michael and Chancellor and Betty. I just, just a brief comment, and then I will turn it over to our community leadership as well. One of the great experiences of my life, adult life, over the last years was traveling to the cities of the civil rights movement and visiting the Rosa Parks Museum, where there is a replica of one of the buses where Rosa Parks made history. And Councilmember Hanson said something about, or referred to what Rosa Parks would be doing today at 107 years old. If she were alive today, she would be riding in the front of the bus and a whole lot more. And her story is one of the most powerful American symbols of how a person without any formal title or power can change the world just by insisting on her God-given rights and on justice and equality. And that's, there are so many levels of the Rosa Parks story, but it's the ability of anybody sitting in this audience. You don't have to have a title, and you can be great. And so what an appropriate commemoration. Thank you, councilmembers Hanson and Jennings, for bringing this forward tonight. Mr. Harris.
Mayor Steinberg, City Manager, Officers, City Council. Councilmember Jennings referenced my mother, but she was born in a rural place in Alabama, and then her mother was born not too far from there, in a place where Native Americans in Choctaw County, Alabama. And my father, he was in rural Louisiana, you know, Washtot Nation. And so, you know, I was born here in Sacramento, and I was just laughing with my mom about, on my birth certificate, it says "Negroide," and I was like, why not just Negro or colored? What's a Negroide, Mom? What is that? And so there's this history that is, you know, ingrained in my blood, and I just can't let it loose. And so Mayor Steinberg would tell you, this when he was Assembly Member, he's on the original ACR 116 when Herb Wesson was Speaker, and you were there. I got your signature.
Yeah.
And so today, 20 years later, you know, we having the same conversation, and some of you've known me that long, but the beauty, Rosa Parks is not dead. She's in a, a little piece of hers in every American. When we say forming a more perfect union, we don't need to deal with the horrendous stuff she had to face down as the patron saint of the Women's Political Council that founded and undergirded the civil rights movement, because it was black women that paid the heavy price coming out of slavery and Jim Crow. So I will show the picture and leave copies for folks. This is, the next 50 years, Rosa Parks, you know, we call it Afrofuturism, has a new spin, but if you look at the face and the determination and the faith of this woman in the AME Church, there's no understanding that any human being will know that she lives, a little piece of her in all of us. So I'm going to be quiet.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council, fellow speakers, on behalf of UC Davis, I want to express our deepest support of this resolution and appropriately delivered during Black History Month. The diversity of Greater Sacramento remains one of its greatest strengths. We're a place where people from all walks of life come together to work, to live, and to learn. At UC Davis, we strive each day to accelerate social mobility for students of all backgrounds. We bring diverse teams together to innovate and make discoveries that lead to a better tomorrow. We think Rosa Parks, we think of her as a guiding light, and her impact still shines with us today. In fact, we need to remind ourselves how her courage and strength continues to inspire more than ever in these divisive times. So with a single act, Rosa Parks changed the course of this country. She made it clear that one person can make a profound difference. Her bravery and unyielding dedication to social justice inspire us even today, and I like to remind our students sometimes that it was not that long ago. My mother, as a young girl, sat on the back of the bus and was forced to do that. So it was only a generation ago. So we have to keep these values of social equity and diversity as core goals of our mission at UC Davis, and I'm proud that our school of law, Mayor Steinberg's alma mater, I should mention, is named Martin Luther King Jr., King Hall School of Law. The statue of him in the lobby reminds us each day to strive for justice and equity. Our campus is also guided by principles of community that set standards of respect, civility, and inclusion. Like Rosa Parks, we believe everyone should be able to thrive in a climate of equity and justice. So I appreciate that the city of Sacramento shares the same values as UC Davis. Our campus might span both sides of the causeway, but it's encouraging to know how much common ground we share. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor May, for coming to City Hall tonight. It means a lot. It really does.
Good evening, Mayor.
It means a lot that you're here, too.
I'm always glad to be among great people. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Cassandra Jennings, President and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. Thank you for remembering and celebrating. Each and every day, the work at the Greater Sacramento Urban League stands on the shoulders of the bold and courageous efforts to people like Rosa Parks. We stand on her shoulders in the fight for justice in our communities, for people of color, and for those that have been denied access. It is important that we give tribute to those who have made significant contribution to address unfair policies and practices and remember where we came from in order to be clear about where we're going. I am so grateful that there was a woman named Rosa Parks that with one simple and courageous act changed my life, changed the trajectory of a people, and the entire world. The change did not happen overnight, but she contributed to a movement of change that took years for results to see evidenced and that we are still building on today. My memories are vivid through the history that I've lived and that the teachings I have absorbed all throughout my life. My mom, who is now 91 years old and lives here in Sacramento, often reminds me that she could have been Rosa Parks. I'm like, huh? She says that because that, she says that because the year before Rosa Parks and the Montgomery bus boycott, she was eight months pregnant in Augusta, Georgia, and sat down in the white seats on the bus. My father was there in the service, and she was tired. She was big. She was tired and she was weary. But she took a seat there, and she, like many other women and men, boys and girls, experienced the harshness, the dehumanization, and the demeaning that unfair practices and policies in our country project upon us all. But Rosa Parks was the one that put a stake in the ground and said enough is enough. Rosa Parks was following the rules. She sat in the colored section, but then because the rest of the bus was full, she was asked to give up her seat for a white person. She was arrested. Now, I grew up in the years that followed the Montgomery boycott and lived in the segregated South in my hometown in North Carolina. I attended a colored school. I drank from a colored-only fountain, and I sat in the colored movies in the balcony because we weren't allowed to sit in the, in the, in the bottom section. And then I also had to go to the takeout window of the restaurants because there was no dining allowed for colored people. Today, I and all of us reap from the benefits of the efforts of Rosa Parks and her perseverance that you've already heard about, her steadfastness, and her commitment to justice, fairness, and equity. Today, we celebrate history and the efforts of Rosa Parks. Today, whether we are courageous as an individual, as the mayor talked about, or as an organization such as the Urban League, the NAACP, and all the other organizations fighting for justice, or a collective of many, we continue to fight for justice, equity, and those that are denied their rights. So as quoted in the book, which I brought with me, that I read to my grandchildren, I quote, "When asked if she stayed seated because she was tired, Rosa said, 'The only tired I was was tired of giving in.'" So I want to thank the city of Sacramento for this day of recognition for Rosa Parks. I want to say happy birthday to Rosa Parks because this is her day, and happy Rosa Parks Day to all because we are overcoming. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Betty Williams. I'm the president of the Greater Sacramento NAACP. Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmen Steve Hanson and Rick Jennings. Thank you for allowing me these few minutes to celebrate the past secretary of the Montgomery, Alabama NAACP, Rosa Parks, who was born on this day, February 4th, 1913, just four years from 1909 when NAACP began. As president of the Sacramento branch of the NAACP, our branch started in 1916, so as this year, we are 104 years old. The parents of Rosa Parks, James and Louise LaCullen, didn't know at the birth that their daughter actually had embedded the vision of the NAACP. The vision of the NAACP states it is to ensure that the society in which all individuals have equal rights without discrimination based on their race. It was in 1932 when Rosa Parks married Raymond Parks. He was a barber at the time, but he also was an active member of the NAACP, and he volunteered. And at the time, he was part of a group that investigated the Scottsboro Boys, who were nine African-Americans that was accused of rape of two white women. It was his courage and his commitment to the NAACP that brought Rosa Parks to the organization. And early on, she was an activist for the youth and college division of the NAACP and later became the secretary of the NAACP for the state conference, someone equal to like an Alice Huffman in the NAACP. Although she was the president and did, the secretary and did many things, I say president because the bylaws of the NAACP states if something happens to the president and the vice president of the NAACP, the secretary becomes the president of the branch and the unit. There's many stories about Rosa Parks, how she got up from the bus when she was simply tired, but many of us don't know that this was the second time that she had ran into the bus driver, James Blake. In 1943, Rosa Parks and James Blake ran into each other for the first time, and actually, she paid her fare. And back then, you pay your fare in the front of the bus, then you get off and go to the rear of the bus to get onto the colored section. She was tired then, and she didn't feel like going to the back of the bus to get on. She had paid her fare. Her and James Blake, the then-bus driver, got into such a scuffle that he tore the arms off the sleeve of her coat. On that day, she said that she would never get on his bus again. So she made a conscious look at it, looking at the bus driver every time she got on the bus. But in 1955, December 1st, she was tired, she was weary, she was rushed, and she didn't notice that James Blake was the same bus driver. And she got on that bus, and she sat in the colored section, and then when the white section became filled, he went to that section where she was sitting and asked that road to get up and allow a white man to sit. And she realized then there was James Blake, the old bus driver that she had fought 12 years ago, and went into, I'm too tired and I'm not giving in. And so she didn't. So many people don't know that story, that it was her second time with the same bus driver that she decided to fight for her rights, a courageous leader, a black woman. The California connection, some of you may or may not know Willis Edwards, who was a courageous fighter in the NAACP in the Hollywood branch, but Willis Edwards and his civil rights was a hero to the Rosa Parks institution, where he was responsible for the Rosa Parks stamp in 2006. He also was responsible and campaigned for the Congressional Gold Medal, and he was instrumental in her sitting next to the first lady then, Lady Hillary Clinton, when President Clinton delivered the 1999 State of the Union. So as a black woman and a leader of the Sacramento NAACP branch, I am so proud of a seamstress named Ms. Rosa Parks who stitched her way into a movement of courage and determination within the soul of America and the NAACP that lasted 381 days where black folks car-pooled and only rode in black-owned taxicabs. Also, walked one way. Also walked one way as many as 20 miles. Rosa Parks, a lot of people don't know, was also arrested for coordinating the carpool and the ride pool of black individuals. She was actually the original black Uber. But through those 381 days, we were victorious. Five days before Christmas, December 20th, 1956, where the boycott ended, and to this day, we have a Rosa Parks celebration and the celebration of what I call a courageous woman. Thank you for having this resolution, and I appreciate you having me attend. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. LaShelle Dozier, the executive director of S.A.T.R.A., but also as Councilmember Hansen mentioned, I too grew up and was born in Mobile, Alabama. And at that particular time, my mother told me a lot of the things, I was very young, but she told me a lot of the segregation that went on and a lot of things that she had to deal with. She talked about the boycott and the fact that everybody got together, everyone gave somebody a ride or helped someone get to where they were going to go, because they were determined that they were going to shut that bus company down. She was the type of woman, if anybody knows my mother, that's a theme today, that she was very strong-willed. But she did talk about the fact that when you went downtown to try on a dress, you had to go to a separate dressing room. If they allowed you to even go into a dressing room, usually you had to buy your clothes and take them home. You weren't allowed to change, change your clothes in the dressing rooms that other white people were allowed to do. But there's one particular story that she shared with me. She said that my mother was a maid, she was a housekeeper, and the lady across the street said, "Do you know someone who could come and clean my house?" And she said, "Yes, I have a friend, and I'll have her come over." So her friend went over, cleaned the house. The next day, she came to my mom, and she says, "Don't send that gal back here again." And my mom said, "Oh, what's wrong? Did, did, did something not go well? Was there a problem?" She says, "No," but she had the nerve to come through my front door. And knowing my mother, that probably wasn't a good thing to tell her, because she thought about all of the marches and all of the work and all of the things that people had sacrificed, and the fact that Rosa Parks had sat on that bus and said no. And she said, "Well, you better be glad that you didn't hire me, because I would have went through your front damn door." And that's the type of courage that many black women really had to take on to really deal with all of the segregation that was happening in the South. And I'm so proud to be a part of that rich history and tapestry, and that's what's formed me, and that's what really has made me the woman that I am today, and I stand on all of their shoulders. And I'm so, so glad that she said no, and she sat down on that bus that day and didn't get up, because that's why we're able to stand up now. Thank you.
Really powerful, powerful testimony, and we're grateful to all of you for sharing in detail tonight why remembering Rosa Parks is so important. Steve, do you want to present the resolution?
Anybody want to come down?
Yeah, sure do.
Come on. Let's do it.
Thank you.
You're good, Dan U.
I got a choice.
Thank you.
How are you?
It's going to be a regular thing.
Too bad, we got some good stuff going.
Okay.
Don't be shy, everybody get up.
Come on up.
One gets it better.
LaShelle?
Yep.
Fighting over it.
You got your head, Kelly. Sorry, you're good.
So, that's the way to start a city council meeting. Thank you. Okay. We now move to the consent calendar. I would like to, we don't have to pull it up, I would like to discuss item three, please. Do members want to discuss any specific items or take any items off the consent calendar?
21, I think, is...
Yes, I do have something to read into the record. Item number 21 is continued to February 11th.
Okay.
And then are you pulling item three for a second vote?
I'm not going to pull it. No, just discussion, okay?
Thank you. So we do have a motion in a second.
Consent's been moved and seconded. Very good. I just wanted to, I wanted to just take a moment to discuss item number three, which is our last tranche of drawing down the state money, the federal money, for the Pathways to Health program, otherwise known as the Whole Person Care Initiative. You know, we spent a lot of time on this dais appropriately talking about how we're going to house people who were unsheltered and homeless, and as you know, we have a multi-pronged plan that is in the midst of implementation as we speak. The part of the city's commitment that has not gotten quite as much attention is the original Whole Person Care program. If you remember back in the day, I think it might have been 2017, our county decided that it was not going to apply for Whole Person Care, and the city was asked to, through me, through its mayor, and we decided to. And we made a decision to put up some real money, but to draw down upwards of $30-plus million of federal money to match not only the city money, but money from a whole wide array of our healthcare partners. And I want to recognize and of course, thank them for their participation. The result over the past couple of years has been the following, and I think it's worth highlighting. As of the middle of January, almost 1,800 people enrolled in the program, almost 900 are currently active. These are homeless people, most of them, over 50% over the age of 50. Almost 60% had comorbid or trimorbid mental health, substance abuse disorder, and are chronic medical conditions upon entry. These are the frequent users oftentimes of the emergency rooms. We rehoused through pathways. This is separate, again, from our shelter path, although there are some, some overlap. We've rehoused 526 people. The average length of stay for graduated clients is nine months. Significant decreases in psychosocial acuity, in other words, people are getting better and are feeling better. We provided over $3 million in rent subsidies for pathway clients, and reallocated almost $200,000 to provide desperately needed transportation services for, for people. And so I just wanted to point out that the state of California, Governor Newsom, has put out a very robust proposal to continue a form of Whole Person Care. Of course, we don't know what's going to happen at the federal level, as we have a presidential election this year and in November, but there's every hope and expectation that this model of assertive outreach, case management, combined with our shelter and housing strategy, is going to allow us to get thousands of people off the streets. I know John Foley from SAC Self-Help Housing is here, and Kristi Gonzalez from WellSpace want to thank you and all the partners for what you have done to make this city effort, there's been a city effort, a great success. The county, by the way, now is also very interested, and we're partnering with them in more positive ways than ever before, and that to me is very, very encouraging. That's all I wanted to say. Ready to vote the consent calendar?
I do have one speaker on item nine, and Vice Mayor Harris would like to make comments on item 10.
Okay. Who's the speaker on?
So, item 10, Khalil Ferguson.
Item nine.
Item nine. Pardon me. And then Vice Mayor Harris has comments on 10.
Gotcha.
Good, good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Khalil Ferguson. I'm an executive fellow for policy and research at the California Urban Partnership. And while we appreciate the recommendation to accept the California Bureau of Cannabis Control Local Equity Grant in the amount of $1,197,119.34, we disagree with the city staff's recommendation to use the funds exclusively for a reimbursement program. Limiting the application to reimbursement does not reduce the barriers for entry as it does not provide upfront access to capital, which is one of the biggest hindrances to starting and operating a dispensary or cannabis enterprise. The purpose of the core program was to be intentional in reducing barriers for entry for cannabis entrepreneurs. It was not intended to be a retroactive support program that does not address the immediate needs of people impacted by the war on drugs. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief comment on number 10, which pertains to short-term rentals. I'd like to thank our staff, Tessa St. John, Susan Wren, and also Matt Ruyak for helping bring this forward. This tightens up our code quite substantially and helps us bring people into compliance in terms of the short-term rental program, and for that, I'm deeply grateful.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. That's the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, the consent calendar passes. Very good. All right. We do have a couple of items that I think will take some time tonight and a few that may go relatively quickly. Let's begin with item 23, which is the Second Amendment to the Greed Buyer Development Project.
I move to continue.
Oh, that'll...
The recommendation is to continue the item to February 25th, 2020.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Is there any public testimony on the continuance?
There's not.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, that passes, the continued until late February. Let's take items 24 and 25 together. In terms of representation, I know they have to be separate votes.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of City Council. I'm Peter Limos, I'm Code and Housing Enforcement Chief for your Community Development Department. The items before you are Neighborhood Code Compliance and Housing in Dangerous Buildings Case Fees and Penalties for Special Assessment and/or Personal Obligation. I will present these concurrently if it's okay. The Community Development Department Administrative Penalties and Neighborhood Code Compliance Case Fees Staff Reports list an amended total of 118 properties with a sum of $250,251.94 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for special assessment and/or personal obligations against property. Nine properties listed in the Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and identified as line numbers 8, 13, 51, 76 through 79, 113, 118, 119, 149, 166, and 167. Item 25, the Housing in Dangerous Buildings Case Fees Staff Report lists an amended total of 23 properties with a total of $33,933.31 of unpaid fees scheduled for special assessment against the property. Three properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have set up payment plans and/or have been paid in full and are identified as items numbers 4 through 7 and number 21. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the two resolutions separately as amended to allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessments, levies, and/or personal obligations upon the properties. That's it.
Open and close?
Open and close the public hearing. So moved by Councilmember Ashby, moved the item, seconded by Councilmember Geta.
Sheneer.
Sheneer, that's what I meant. And is there, is there any, is there any public?
So that's on, that's on item 24?
Is there any public testimony?
There is not.
There is not. Let's take the, move, 24's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, that passes. Same motion on item 25, please. That'll be moved by Councilmember Ashby.
Open and close the hearing?
Seconded by Sheneer. Same thing.
So Councilmember Ashby, open to close the public hearing?
That's what I heard.
And then I heard Councilmember Sheneer a second?
You did.
Loud and clear. All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, that passes. Okay.
Nice job.
Good job. Thank you. I know that a lot of work, in all seriousness, we work very hard on these things, we recognize it. Sometimes when it is, moves that quick, it means you've done that good of a job, because there's not controversy, so. There we go. 26, we are, what, passing for publication? Is that what we're doing? What are we doing?
No, it's a vote.
Oh, and it's a vote. We must, we must vote to pass it for publication. Okay, is there any, is there any public testimony?
I do have two speakers on this item.
Go. Yes, please.
So I have two speakers on this, on item 26. Tina Echols and then Lynette Scolaro Placios. Tina, are we making a presentation first?
I, in all seriousness, I wish for a presentation if it's passing for publication. I wonder if they did. Good evening.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. This ordinance is up for approval so that those marijuana CEP facilities already approved in violation of this ordinance can become legal, including those on Kathleen, Land, and LaRosa. It's interesting to note that nowhere on your notice of change of use or rezoning did you put marijuana uses, but commercial and industrial uses to operate near certain light rail stations. Fifty-five of these sites are within one to two blocks of our home, right here, and a homeless encampment, right here, directly across from the marijuana facilities already illegally approved on Kathleen. It's ironic you did an environmental impact statement regarding this ordinance, but none as to the marijuana facilities in our city and the toxins they're releasing into our environment and neighborhoods. Since you've approved the facilities on Kathleen, we've had an increase in crime. Two facilities have been broken into, one which I broke up at 5:30 in the morning. And you know what the owner said? I wasn't cultivating at the time. There's an increase in traffic with multiple speeding vehicles, including those owners of these facilities. There's a skunky smell that is pervasive year-round. There's no security at these facilities like we were promised. There's no improvements to our neighborhood, an increase in homeless encampments, and no monies have been put back into our district as was promised. These employees don't use the regional transit for transportation. The majority of these employees do not live in our neighborhood, and we have a high volume of residents and outsiders who walk up Kathleen to get to this RT station directly across from these facilities on Kathleen. You put their lives, as well as ours, at risk from these facilities. Passing this ordinance will only make the illegalities of these facilities legal. None of these should have passed or are in violation of multiple city ordinances.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
No, I'm sorry, I just have a few more.
Our next speaker is Lynette Scolaro Placios.
I'm sorry, it's a two, it's a two-minute time.
I just have a little bit more, just a little bit more.
But that's the rule. Is there somebody else who can come on up and finish your?
Miss, Miss Echols?
No, not for God's sake. We have rules, because we have a lot of people who want to testify on items, and so we try to follow the rules. It isn't personal to anybody, and we want to hear from everyone, so.
Okay.
That's the way it is.
Of course. Your next speaker, Lynette Scolaro Placios.
I, I put down the wrong item number and corrected that. I'm not supposed to be talking until item number 28.
Be on 28.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there more to public testimony?
There's no public. The tab of testimony is complete.
Vice Mayor Harris has got, does the staff have a presentation? Go ahead.
We do, we do have a brief presentation, but we can waive that if you like.
No? Let's hear it.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I am Ryan Dodge, Associate Plan-
Good evening.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. This ordinance is up for approval so that those marijuana CEP facilities already approved in violation of this ordinance can become legal, including those on Kathleen, Land, and La Rosa. It's interesting to note that nowhere on your notice of change of use or rezoning did you put marijuana uses but commercial and industrial uses to operate near certain light rail stations. Fifty-five of these sites are within one to two blocks of our home, right here, and a homeless encampment, right here, directly across from the marijuana facilities already illegally approved on Kathleen. It's ironic you did an environmental impact statement regarding this ordinance, but none as to the marijuana facilities in our city and the toxins they're releasing into our environment and neighborhoods. Since you've approved the facilities on Kathleen, we've had an increase in crime. Two facilities have been broken into, one which I broke up at 5:30 in the morning. And you know what the owner said? I wasn't cultivating at the time. There's an increase in traffic with multiple speeding vehicles, including those owners of these facilities. There's a skunky smell that is pervasive year-round. There's no security at these facilities like we were promised. There's no improvements to our neighborhood, an increase in homeless encampments, and no monies have been put back into our district as was promised. These employees don't use the regional transit for transportation. The majority of these employees do not live in our neighborhood, and we have a high volume of residents and outsiders who walk up Kathleen to get to this RT station directly across from these facilities on Kathleen. You put their lives, as well as ours, at risk from these facilities. Passing this ordinance will only make the illegalities of these facilities legal. None of these should have passed or are in violation of multiple city ordinances.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
No, I'm sorry. I just have a few more.
Our next speaker is Lynette Scolaro Placios.
I'm sorry, it's a two-minute time.
I just have a little bit more, just a little bit more.
But that's the rule. Is there somebody else who can come on up and finish your...
Ms. Echols?
No, not for God's sake. We have rules because we have a lot of people who want to testify on items, and so we try to follow the rules. It isn't personal to anybody, and we want to hear from everyone, so...
Okay.
That's the way it is.
Of course. Your next speaker, Lynette Scolaro Placios.
I put down the wrong item number and corrected that. I'm not supposed to be talking until item number 28.
Be on 28.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there more to public testimony?
There is no public testimony. The public testimony is complete.
Okay. Vice Mayor Harris has got... Does the staff have a presentation? Go ahead.
We do have a brief presentation, but we can waive that if you like.
No, let's hear it.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I am Ryan Dodge, Associate Planner in the Long Range Planning Team at the Community Development Department. Here tonight, seeking your approval of proposed amendments to the Transit-Oriented Development Ordinance. Please note that we have provided supplemental material that is also available to the public tonight regarding our recommendation to no longer delete City Code Chapter 17.340 relating to the transit overlay zone. Per the memo, deleting the TO zone as previously proposed would inadvertently decrease allowable residential densities of some parcels near light rail stations and would conflict with newly enacted state law. The Transit-Oriented Development Ordinance, which limits auto-centric and low-intensity uses near light rail stations, was approved on December 11th, 2018, and went into effect on January 10th, 2019. During the December 11th public hearing, council requested staff to return with recommended next steps in addressing concerns regarding significant barriers between properties with existing industrial uses and light rail stations. City Council also requested staff to revisit the methodology used to measure distance between light rail stations and properties to be more context-sensitive to the variety of unique conditions across the light rail station system. In early 2019, staff conducted outreach with business and property owners in Cannon Industrial Park near the Marconi Arcade Light Rail Station, Johnston Industrial Park near the Globe Avenue Light Rail Station, and Erickson Industrial Park near the Swanson Light Rail Station. City staff then developed an initial framework for potential changes to the TOD ordinance that would allow existing industrial parks to thrive while also providing flexibility for other types of land uses that over time can transition into a transit-supportive environment. In April 2019, City Council reviewed a proposed framework for revising the TOD ordinance and directed staff to modify the measuring distance methodology to account for the actual distance required to walk and bike from the light rail station instead of "as the crow flies" distance. Staff proposes to measure distance using existing streets and pathways. As described in the staff report, the proposed ordinance would also amend the TOD Special Use Regulation for conditional use permits in the Planning and Development Code. This would be by removing the significant barrier portion of the code since the new methodology to measure distance would eliminate the need for this provision, and applying the Special Use Regulations to new buildings only and not to existing buildings that are seeking a change in use. So, a change in use would still require pedestrian amenities such as lighting, benches, tree shading, and landscaping. In April, City Council also reviewed a proposed framework for a new zoning district, the MT Industrial and Transit Area Zone, that could be applied to areas that have longstanding industrial uses and lack pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and neighborhood-serving amenities and services. The new zoning district would permit existing commercial and industrial uses such as wholesale stores and manufacturing uses to continue to operate, allow higher-intensity residential, commercial, retail office, and mixed uses by right, and prohibit auto-centric uses such as car dealerships, gas stations, and drive-thru restaurants. The proposed new zoning district would be applied to 61 properties in the Cannon Industrial Park and along Railroad Drive. So, staff recommends that tonight the City Council adopt: A) A resolution concluding the project is a subsequent project within the scope of the Master Environmental Impact Report for the 2035 General Plan. The project will not have any project-specific additional significant environmental effects not previously examined in the Master EIR, and no new mitigation measures or alternatives are required per Public Resources Code 21157.1 and CEQA Guidelines 15177. B) An ordinance amending Section 15.148.160, amending various sections of Title 17, adding Section 17.104.130, and adding Article...
I don't know that we need to go through all the numbers, but...
Yeah, yeah. Well, Matt Hurdle...
Maybe 10 more. Go ahead.
As Matt Hurdle, the Acting Long Range Planning Manager, and myself are available to answer questions. I'm also prepared to provide a longer, more detailed presentation. Thank you.
Excellent. I want to ask Ms. Echols, are you still here?
Not yet.
Is there any other representative of the association from... Who's here? Okay, I was going to get up and ask her to respond. I'm sorry. All right, let's hear. Councilman Harris, are you in the queue? Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank our planning staff. You've worked hard on this. It's been to long ledge a couple of times. We've had many meetings about coming to this compromise on the TOD ordinance. I still think that the spirit of the ordinance is intact, but this pragmatic approach to make some carve out some exceptions, especially around the way we measure distance, is going to be very helpful for some existing businesses to thrive and survive. So, I would like to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Okay. Thank you very much. Let us now move to the mid-year budget report. Ms. Wong and team?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Tara Philippich, and I'm the Budget Manager. The item before you is the Fiscal Year 2019-20 Mid-Year Budget Review. The focus of this year's mid-year report is to include only mission-critical items and departmental corrections cleanup requests. This slide shows the prior fund balance, and per the comprehensive annual financial report that was just approved on consent, we had positive revenues and savings from expenditures at fiscal year 19-year-end. The fiscal year 1920 approved budget also resulted in additional savings or resources. In this report, we are recommending a $12.9 million increase in general and Measure U fund revenues, primarily from sales and use taxes and property taxes. Additionally, the mayor has been working with the State Controller on the city's 2017 gas tax audit finding. On January 9, the mayor was able to obtain a letter from the state confirming that the city is not required to repay $2 million to the gas tax fund.
Please repeat that four times.
As reflected on this slide, these changes result in net resources available for the fiscal year in the amount of $81 million. Since budget adoption, almost $46 million has been committed by council actions to date as shown. On the next two slides, I'll be summarizing the mid-year augmentations included in this report. The recommendations in the general fund total $2.3 million. Funding is included in the city's illegal dumping program. This cost is offset by an increase in the general fund tax resulting from the recent solid waste rate increase approved by council. The recommendations in Measure U result in a savings of approximately $93,000. The approved budget includes $7.5 million for the Mayor Council Capital Investment Program. We are requesting $6.8 million be returned to fund balance as they will not be needed this fiscal year. $7.5 million in debt service is included in the out years of the forecast. Partially offsetting the savings, requests total $6.7 million, primarily in the Police Department. Included in this are 20 community service officers, which are limited-term positions through June 2022, purchasing 20 new vehicles and a rescue vehicle, and funding for overtime. After the mid-year recommendations, the revised fiscal year 2019-20 available fund balance will be approximately $33 million. While we have settled with most of our employee organizations, we still have two contracts set to expire within the next 12 months. As you can see, even though we show positive results through fiscal year 2021, we are projecting expenditures to exceed revenues beginning of fiscal year 2122. Following is the fiscal year 2021 budget development timeline. We're planning to have the City Council hearings in the months of May and June. Like this mid-year report, the focus of the year's budget will be to include only mission-critical items and departmental corrections cleanup requests. I thank department staff, the city manager, his assistant city managers, the finance director, and of course the budget office staff for all their work during this mid-year process. Staff from the various departments and I are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Again, this is one of those with a lot of technical details, short presentation, but a tremendous amount of work that goes into it. And so, I just want to say on behalf of the entire City Council how much we appreciate Dawn, you and your team, what great work you do to put this very thick document together and to give us choices, policy choices, which is always what our job is. So, we have one person from the public wants to talk about the city budget. That's a statement.
So, the speaker this evening is Talen Wong.
Okay. Is Wong welcome?
First of all, I want to say congratulations on pronouncing my name correctly. On October 22nd, I woke up to a phone call that... Well, I didn't wake up. I was already awake, but...
Can you speak up a little? I can have a hard time here.
Oh, sure. On the 22nd of October, I received a phone call that my daughter had been hit by a car. She was wearing a helmet, crossing at a marked crosswalk, and she ended up spending a month in the hospital and is still recovering. She was... There are many reasons that an accident like this happens. One of those is a lack of education, which was not the problem here. Like I said, she was wearing her helmet. She had pressed the button. It was flashing. She was crossing at a legal crosswalk. Another is a lack of enforcement, like if people were speeding or on their phones, but the driver was not. He was following all traffic laws. The final reason that an accident like this happens is a lack of failure in engineering of the streets, which I think is the problem here, that the driver couldn't see the signal that was flashing because it was over the sidewalk, not over the road, and it had dire effects. But my daughter was not the only student from her school that was hit by a car that month. She was one of at least three, and two of them were hit crossing the same street. So, Councilmember Hanson has been working on getting money to look at what we can do to fix that crossing because children should be able to get to school safely, and it would be a nightmare to have 900 parents driving their students every day, and so there needs to be a safe way to cross for kids to get to the neighborhood school. Thank you very much.
Is your daughter going to be okay?
She is going to be fine.
Thank God.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Okay. Very sorry, and we're going to talk about this, so... Now, we turn it over to the City Council, and we'll start with Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Talen, and I assume I said it right. Taylin, Talen? Talen, sorry. And Kevin, thank you too for being here tonight. It was a very moving night. I had to rush out of here because we were having a community meeting, and our council meeting had ended, and several hundred people came together at Sutterville Elementary to talk about what had happened. But the accident that happened to Ms. Wong's daughter, the next morning, we're out there, and I want to thank our staff, Ryan Moore, our Police Department, the investigators, David Drauselin, for coming out and helping us to look at solutions. But the ultimate solution here is something that we have not yet found resources for, and so I wanted the council to begin thinking about how we begin to address some of the unsafe conditions on our streets. We've been so successful at reducing violent crime, and I really think the Police Department deserves a ton of credit for pushing homicides, particularly those of youth, to zero in that category, but overall, just really doing a great job. And Deputy Chief Paletta and I spoke that day about what we could be doing. And part of it's more enforcement, and we're working on bringing in officers, and tonight's budget creates new community service officer positions that can help with traffic enforcement, which is one of the great desires. Councilmember Jennings has raised this. I've raised this. I know Mr. Guerra has. But one of the things, Mr. City Manager, I would like to do is see if we can identify, I think your staff have said it would cost $100,000 for preliminary engineering and design to help get this going, and then maybe in the main budget, we can find a way to fund this particular intersection, which is betwixt several schools, both elementary, middle, high, and also next to Fairy Tale Town, Thunderland, the zoo. I've noted that the zoo is receiving funding tonight for more study, but this is the kind of thing that I think the public with Measure U, with our general fund, with our resources, wants to see. And one of the things that I had proposed when we talked about the city budget last June was money to fund our Vision Zero program, and I know that that's not the conversation we're going to have tonight, but I do believe that Vision Zero as a policy architecture, along with our Complete Streets policy, which we passed in December, and our Safe Roots to School program, needs the resources to be able to fix not just the dangerous condition at Sutterville and Mead, but on our other commercial corridors. And when we looked at the dangerous intersections, they were in North SAC and South SAC. They were on Fruit Ridge and Florin. They were on Franklin. They were on 12th Street. And so, 12th Street and the River District in particular was a very dangerous place. Yet, you know, as we've worked through this, we still don't have the resources to address those needs, and I just wanted to tee up that particular conversation for the budget itself. And I know there are a lot of demands on the resources that we're talking about today as we look to this next budget, and I know we are good at trying to address those priorities, but I wanted to tee that up, and particularly in honor of this young woman who was doing everything right, and the driver, who is a young man going to McClatchy, who is doing everything right. But we need to fix that engineering to make sure that people doing everything right are protected. And so, thank you for being here tonight. I want to thank you, Mayor, actually, on moving on from this particular traffic safety item. Because of your work with the state, we actually have gotten money back that we've been holding on gas tax revenues, and you deserve a great amount of praise for that $2 million. I'm sure that you've thought of ways to expend it already, but...
Maybe.
Maybe. But I also, just as we talk about the budget, last week, we talked about the Affordable Housing Bond. We are trying to tee up work around repairing our city facilities, not only our pools, but our community centers, our fire stations, and in economic development work. And I guess one of the greatest fears I have is that I don't really know, and I've asked our budget staff to prepare, I've asked them this question, and hopefully they've prepared information, about how Measure G would affect our spending. And I know that's a controversial question because we're not all on the same page up here about it, but I also believe we need to be fully informed before we make further decisions that have major impacts. And Dawn, have you been able to assess what the impacts of Measure G would be? Measure G is a very well-intended measure. You know, it is for youth programs, which I think everybody agrees are important, but I guess my worry is our homelessness initiatives, which you've talked about a lot tonight, Mayor, our work on housing, and all the other things we're trying to do could be compromised. And so, I just wanted Dawn to tell us what it would mean if it passed.
So, what we were able to do, we've prepared preliminary numbers on Measure G so that we can plan. What we're showing is the forecast. If you look to the bottom line here, we have layered in our estimate for Measure G based on the revenue, using citywide revenues from the general fund and Measure U, what we would have to commit in addition to current spending. So, you can see, it was $12.9 million when we originally released that information to the council members, but then with the mid-year increase, we're going to up that by $348,000. So, you can see that takes our estimated for 22 from a negative $21 million to negative $34, almost $35 million. And then we've grown that in the out years based on our same revenue projections.
Could I just ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, I want you to leave that sheet up here, by the way.
Okay.
After the rest of the case.
Yeah. Dawn, as I understand, the intention behind Measure G is to establish a baseline expenditure amount, and then that is on top of it. They call it a maintenance of effort.
That's correct.
And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of debate about what the baseline expenditure is, but basically, it's the amount in this current budget year 1920 that we're spending on youth programs. What is the current sort of estimate of that baseline that we would have? What is the current sort of estimate of that baseline that we would have to continue for the next 10 years?
So, we believe our total youth funding is about $36 million, but of that, only about 22 and 1/2 is from the general fund and Measure U. So, that's our preliminary. We are still refining our numbers and working through, as it was reported in the B, looking at some of those programs to make sure we're only reporting programs that are truly serving youth.
One last ques-- you can go ahead, Mayor.
I don't want to get too far. I feel that it's Measure G. I want to make a broader comment about, when it's my turn, about our entire budget circumstance, but I... I think in fairness, on the Measure G thing, we should tee it up if we're going to have a council discussion about its impact on all sides of this thing.
And I had asked for that, Mayor, but it didn't yet happen. And so, when I got my Measure U, or my Measure, my general, my mid-year briefing yesterday, I didn't yet have the information, which is why I asked Ms. Wong to come today, prepared. And, you know, it's 28 days till people have to decide, but I think we're going to have to make a lot of decisions going forward. And one of the biggest concerns I have, and you don't have to answer this, but I'll just respond to your statement, Mayor, is when we come back, I don't know, because of the way Measure G operates, that we would have any choice but to reduce staffing in critical general fund departments if we ended a recession. And that's really one of the things that this chart helps me see, and so, thank you for your work. I know that you didn't have much time to turn it around, but we met yesterday afternoon, and here we are, 24 hours later, and I appreciate you.
I mean, members can raise any issues, of course, but I will say, there is going to be a full opportunity, again, within the context of City Hall, because this is not the campaign, and we don't want to do that here. But for informational purposes, there will be a full opportunity to discuss this pro-con and all of its ramifications, because I have proposed, I have a proposal related to Measure G that I want to bring forward here for council discussion over the next couple of weeks. We'll have full opportunity, I think, to appropriately, with the city attorney readily admonishing us, to not be, and you weren't, but to be, you weren't, you weren't, but to be, when we have that discussion, to make sure that we're confining it to the budgets, the budget discussion.
One final comment, Mayor. The reason I raised it on mid-year is we don't have a budget in front of us, except for very rarely, and I just didn't have the budget information I needed to understand how this was going to work. So, that was my...
That's fine.
That was what I needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we keep that up there and move through the queue here. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you. I'm not sure why you want to keep it up there. This is not our budget.
Well, take that off, then. Take off the Measure G piece. I'd like you to put on the same thing without the Measure G piece. I want to talk about the regular budget.
And I'm totally happy to have a Measure G discussion when we want, but let's do it where everyone has the same information walking in the door.
Okay, let's, go ahead.
So, at, thanks. So, at our Budget and Audit Committee last week, I asked a lot of questions about the CSOs, and really with the intent of understanding the interplay between overtime in the police department and hiring the CSOs that would get us. And then, since then, my staff and I have had multiple opportunities to talk to both folks in the Budget Department, Finance Department, and with the Chief of Police and some of his folks as well, which was really helpful. I want to say I'm very, very supportive of the CSOs. I think really finding the right skill levels and capacities to meet the needs that we have in the city is important. The CSOs, as many of you know, don't carry guns. They're probably 2/3 the cost, more or less, of a sworn officer, and can do a lot of the jobs that need to happen that allow the sworn officers to do the work that they really need to do, and that their skill set and capacity is appropriate for. So, I want to thank the folks for kind of having those discussions. I think the CSOs contained in the mid-year are important. The way it's listed, though, I think we can do better, because the way it's listed has limited-term positions. I understand that we want the individuals to be limited-term, because we want to see if we can move them on as a pipeline into the police force, but the positions themselves, we should continue to have, again, because it's a less effective, less expensive, more efficient way to provide services. And as a result of the CSOs we did last year, our response time has dropped dramatically, and I think with these folks, it will again. And Mr. Hanson was just talking about traffic. We don't have many traffic police, and this is something that they can do, and it's really important. So, my, what I want to propose, Mr. Mayor, is as we adopt the mid-year, and this will cost us no more money at this point, but rather than keep these as limited-term positions, let's make them permanent positions, with the job description having the individuals be limited-term. So, this is really recognizing the need of what the CSOs can do for us, how we can provide these services, again, more effectively, more efficiently, at a lower cost, but doing, continuing to reduce response time to folks in our neighborhoods.
It sounds good. I just want to understand it a little bit more.
So, basically, we had these as limited-term, so in two and 1/2 years, these positions would go away. We want the individuals to be limited-term, because we want to move them through the ranks as a platform or as a pipeline into being sworn officers.
Yes.
But I think that, so those are the individuals, the positions we want to always have, so that we have that, these additional 20, and you'll backfill and rotate into them, which I think serves the city really well.
That makes sense.
Right, so, just to be clear, we're keeping the positions ongoing.
But the job descriptions would create limited-term individuals.
The individuals sitting in those permanent positions would be limited to...
Yes.
Three years.
Right, and I know you guys have talked to HR, and this is possible. I've also heard from the president of SPOA today that they're excited about this as well, so we shouldn't have any challenges with the union. So, my change, that change doesn't affect the budget this year, it doesn't affect the budget next year. It will affect, because you had built back in the costs when these limited-term positions expire, so in three years, basically, more or less, those positions at about $1.3 million altogether. Well, 1-7 counted the others, too. The, I thought the CSOs were a little bit, okay, whatever they are. That's fine. Y'all can correct me. Just go down the line. It's fine. So, I would, I would ask whoever makes a motion on the... I'll go ahead and make a motion on the mid-year with that change. So, again, it doesn't affect the next couple of years of funding.
Jay, would you include the direction I talked about related to the traffic issues?
Sure.
Yeah. Thanks.
And there could be other intense suggestions as we go through the queue here, so may I ask you to amend as we go?
I'm done amending.
What's that?
I'm done amending.
You're done amending, okay. Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Jay's done amending, and I'm just getting started. Actually, I'm not. So, staff, I think, has wisely programmed in about $280,000 for the illegal dumping program. This is a very important program. It principally affects D6 and D2, but it's all over the city. I have some questions for our Public Works Director, Ryan. Would you mind coming down? While he's walking, I just want to say that I'm more principally focused on our ability to clean up the trash that is generated by the unhoused population. It accumulates very quickly in the city, and I get a tremendous amount of correspondence from constituents, not only from my district, but all over the city, about how can we let our city degenerate this way? How can we allow so much trash on the streets? So, we already have a team funded, correct, to pick up homeless trash, and they work hand-in-hand with the Impact Team?
So, yes, we just have hired a contractor to do that. We have a couple, we have some staff on, staff, full-time employees. They have citywide responsibilities, though, so they aren't able to be with the Impact Team. Just last week, we started our new contract with a contractor who is embedded with the Impact Team 40 hours a week to do that cleanup.
And we still have staff also working on the same problem, as well as the contractor embedded with the Impact Team?
We have staff in addition to, a few days a week, we have the Conservation Corps. But again, they have citywide responsibilities. Some of that is homeless mitigation, some of that is illegal dumping, they have a variety of duties. The contractor is specifically dedicated to the Impact Team.
And what's the value of that contract?
For the Impact Team, it's $100,000 for the first six months.
Okay.
And we will be coming forward with a fiscal year, ask for an additional 200 for the following 12 months.
Well, I would suggest when we come back with the budget that we double that amount, because clearly, we don't have the staff to maintain, you know, our streets to the level that I think that our constituents expect. So, Mr. Mayor, he's gone.
You're now Vice Mayor.
Oh, that would be me. I'm going to ask myself to program in another $200,000 come the budget. So, not being facetious, however, we really need to allocate resources to this. So, I'll ask the manager, you know, that in the ensuing couple of months, as we get towards building the budget, we need to really focus on this problem. It's a citywide problem, and of course, the more people we can move into housing, we expect fewer impacts from, you know, living outdoors. But it's going to be a while until that population is reduced to the point where the trash accumulation is not as extreme as it is currently. This is a big concern citywide. It's a huge concern in my district, with roughly half the homeless population in the six-county region sleeping overnight in D3. So, that is my ask, Mr. Manager, that we start looking for resources to take that contract and probably double it when we come back to budget. Thank you.
Jeff, you're up on Vice Mayor duties, but I see Councilmember Guerra's out, so I'll just go next and then take my name out of the queue, and then you can call him up later. Is that okay? Yeah?
Mr. Pro Tem, that's accepted.
Okay. All right. I can be pretty quick on this. I want to just say, great job to Budget. I think this is really good. I like that we're saving the bulk of the money. I always like it when we do that at mid-year. It gives us a lot more opportunity when we have the more robust dialogue with all the departments to figure out what we need to do. Jay, I seconded your motion. I think it's really good. I appreciate where you've come on the CSOs. You asked a lot of good questions at Budget and Audit last week. What you described is exactly what I want with those positions, too. In my district, I don't have a lot of officers, and so, I get a lot of complaints that are very similar to what Councilmember Hanson has just described here and what happened at Sutterville. Talen, you would have unfortunately, good company in my district, too, and we need to do something about that, and yet, we can't put officers on all of those calls, so this is a wonderful way for us to do it. I think I'm okay with the idea that the goal would be for folks to move on. For people who don't know, CSOs are the ones that wear the light blue shirts, and our chief, right now, started as a CSO. So, it's a really great entryway into the police department to then become a police officer and maybe even later be the chief. So, I think that's great, but there are some people that get into that seat and they want to stay. So, I don't want somebody to have to move out of the CSO seat if they don't want to. However, I think they might be able to transition them from one of those 25 seats specifically to another, but I think if that became an issue, you could come back and let us know. But that is much needed in other parts of the city, too, and I think it's a really nice, eloquent way that the chief came forward with a plan here to help us get more resources quickly out there. And then, I, on this Vision Zero issue, I really want to support Councilmember Hanson. This is extremely important, and it is probably a top-tier issue in my district, too. We have a lot of kids getting hit in crosswalks. Unfortunately for me, you said 900 cars driving to a school would be a disaster. Let me assure you, it is, and I have it in my district every morning at about six different schools. And all year long, it's, you know, whack-a-mole of sending a couple of police officers to each school to get folks good there, then move to the next, the next, and we just don't have the resources to police 900 cars. But part of the reason that parents are doing that is they don't want their child, even if they use a crosswalk, even wearing a helmet, even following all the rules, to find themselves in a hospital bed. So, which, we got to find the balance here, and part of it is being able to pay for guarded lights and hawk lights and crossings and all the things that we need to keep bikers and pedestrians safe and especially kids. So, I really want to say that is important, too. And, you know, the other thing is, part of it is behavior. At Truxell in San Juan, which is just outside of my district, but in Councilmember Harris's district, there have been two kids hit in the last year, but both were not crossing appropriately. They both go to schools in my district and live in his district, and were trying to get to bus stops. Both were hurt pretty badly, but their behavior wasn't, you know, they didn't wait and go through a crosswalk either. They're darting through traffic, trying to catch the bus, trying to do these things, and, you know, we just have to do a better job of having the resources in place to help these kids safely get to and from school and bus stops. So, Vision Zero, to me, can't just be something we write on paper and never fund. We've got to put money towards that goal. It doesn't have to happen at mid-year, but I want to reiterate the importance of that to me as well. Citywide, in every council district, this is an issue, and sometimes, it's finishing a path in District 7, or like some conversations that'll happen here tonight. For me, I have a half-built district, so there are lots of roads that don't connect and sidewalks that aren't finished, and we have to have the resources to go back and fix those for kids. So, I just want to reiterate my component to that. And then, I know there's some frustration on the Measure G issue or the last line, but I just want to thank Dawn, because I feel like, sitting here for nine years, I've seen you get yelled at on this issue more times than not, but it's not unusual for us to ask for some projection. I saw it on Measure U, I've seen it when we've had pending litigation. So, while it might not be fair to count it in as part of the budget now, as Councilmember Chenier said, I think we're wise to at least consider it. And Mayor, I love the idea that possibly, when you bring your better way suggestion forward, maybe we have a broader discussion on Measure G, so folks could hear where council members stand, and maybe we can help, you know, inform the public and get some information from each of us, and we're all operating from the same...
Consistent with the city attorney's advice again here, because I'm just sensitive to the fact that this is not a campaign venue.
Exactly.
And so, there is a line, and we just need to understand it.
We just need to be clear about it, but it's also important for people to know kind of what the impacts are, good and bad. They need to be able to hear from us, so. All right, that's it, and I'm happy to second the motion. I think it's great. Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Getta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start off first on the pedestrian issue here. Councilmember Hanson and I have been working a lot on the Vision Zero, and I want to commend him for taking this lead on District, in District 6, both, and District 5. Councilmember Chenier and I share Stockton Boulevard, and it is one of the areas where, of the five most dangerous six intersections, two are on that corridor, on Stockton and Broadway, and then Stockton and 47th Avenue in the south area. And it wasn't too long ago that we had another pedestrian vehicle fatality. And pedestrian fatalities on Broadway and 53rd, and Broadway and 65th, almost within 10 blocks of each other, we had another, two fatalities there from individuals who were seniors. So, it's not just our children. I know, I remember the tragedy on 58th and Fruit Ridge back in, I think it was 2009, and of a young student walking to school. But even more recently, on, at Elder Creek Elementary, which is on the corner of Lemon Hill and Power Inn, we've had the significant issues there. And many of those situations are parents. So, here, what I'd like to do is echo the direction that Councilmember Hanson said, but I think what I would prefer to see is, and Mr. Mayor, you're Chair of the Budget and Audit Committee, is an item come to the Budget and Audit Committee where we can discuss what would it truly cost to start making a significant change? We can change engineering, we can change enforcement. We're talking about engineering recently because of pedestrian crossings, signal lights, intersections, looking at how do we improve the technology. But on the enforcement side, when I started on the council five years ago, there was only four traffic officers, because we had laid off so many folks during the recession. Now, we've increased it, but we need to also have that conversation. And then, the social change part. I think that what we've started, I commend our city staff for starting on the social change aspects of it, but we need to think about, what are we going to do to slowly, to begin, not slowly, but to begin immediately changing that, the driver, the driver mentality. And frankly, Sacramento is a, because of its major employment center, our neighboring cities and our neighboring partners, many of their drivers are driving into our city. So, I think what I'd like to do is figure out, how do we elevate this to a bigger issue? And I know it's not just Sacramento, because I understand San Francisco's been having the same issue and other major metropolitan areas. So, I'll leave it at that, saying that I echo those concerns, and I do want to give a shout-out to the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association, who've been trying to do pedestrian safety on Broadway for a long time there. I'll go back to illegal dumping. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for responding to that issue. For the constituents over on, in Redding Avenue, and also on Railroad Drive, they've faced a lot of illegal dumping that's happening in those dark areas. I hope this helps not only just clean it up, but start thinking tactically on how to alleviate it. Some of it is from homeless encampments along the railroad, but a big chunk of it is also scofflaws, who unfortunately are choosing to dump in communities in the south area. So, this budget goes a significant way... in communities in the South area. So, this budget goes a significant way in addressing that. Again, thank you for the support for the Fuel Network. We heard robust presentation at the Budget and Audit Committee. And lastly, on the CSOs, again, I want to thank our folks over at both our police department, the President of the Police Union on this. And I'd like to, again, see how do we not just, how do we look at using our money wisely? These CSO positions, I support the position of keeping them permanent, and I want to throw a twist to it. At Hiram Johnson, we have a law academy and where high school students can learn about the different fields in law, not, you know, they can, the DA's, the public defenders, CSI criminal investigation units, and also the police force. We've supported, this council has supported funding for the SAC State Lex Program, that has tried to help increase the number of diverse applicants in our police force as well. And I remember having a conversation with one of our officers who grew up in the South area in Sacramento and was a CSO, and that was the turning point that changed him to go into the academy and then agree to come to Sacramento and not just go through academy and go to another place. So, I'd like to actually see, how do we create a pipeline where students from a very diverse high school can see a career in, early on, almost of this college promise, where they do get a four-year degree, they're also, if they come through this opportunity, can get a job while they're going through school. That's a challenge in itself these days, being able to go to school and have some adequate opportunities and then be part of our own homegrown police force. So, I'd like to close it with that, saying I think there's a lot of positives here, but definitely areas significantly we can approve on. So, thank you very, very much, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Gueda. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of questions. Make sure I understand the amendments that have been offered. Mr. Hanson, what was your amendment?
Mr. I didn't have an amendment. I just asked staff to work on, as they build the budget for the coming year, that we try to fund the Vision Zero program, which we had talked about, but we did not fund specifically.
And on the CSOs, why was, why was the direction written that way for temporary and permanent? And what are the implications of changing it in accordance with the amendment that has been offered?
Either way, I think the original piece was because they wanted it limited term, and we're thinking limited term across the board, to move people through into the pipeline to become sworn officers. So, we're basically keeping that pipeline, but saying we want these positions permanently. The impact on it is zero at this point, three years out, when they had taken the money back out because it was limited term. We're just going to leave it in at that point.
Who drafted that portion of the budget statement? Are they here?
Police.
Yeah, our police department, and we've worked together. So, Councilmember Shenier is correct. We set it up this way because at the end of three years, the third year, is when the limited-term position goes away. We're going to reevaluate and come back and probably, in all likelihood, ask for those again. And so, Councilmember Shenier is saying, let's make these positions permanent, but let's keep the people in those positions limited term. And that's the discussion we had with our HR department and with the Police Officers Association, and they were agreeable to it.
So, in the case of, Councilmember Ashford, what up of someone who wanted to stay in that position for more than three years?
I'm not sure how we would handle that at this point.
I mean, my, I don't know if you want to have the chief come up, but in the discussions that we had, particularly this morning, their goal is to move people through. They don't want people staying as CSOs for a longer period than that. They want to move them through into the force. That's the pipeline. And Chief, if please, if I'm getting it wrong, correct me, like everyone else does.
Especially at home, right?
So, to answer your question, Councilmember Carr, we could. That's something we can look at, but right now, they're all limited term.
So, why did you want them to be, you didn't want people to stay there for an extended period of time and get some experience?
No, we've done it both ways. When I was hired as a CSO, you could not stay permanently. About 10 years after that, we created both, to where some could be permanent and some couldn't, and then we've gone away from that. So, we've done it both ways.
What did we do on the CSOs that we hired through the last budget process? Which way was that? Were those limited terms?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The CSO positions that we put in in the last budget process, was that limited term?
They're limited term.
All limited terms.
They're all limited term. Correct.
So, when you were a CSO, you went from being a CSO to going to the academy?
Yes.
And?
Well, no, I went through the regular police academy as a CSO.
Oh, as a CSO. And did most of your people do that?
Every, that's the only way you could do it.
Every single person did that? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, I think I'm fine with that. The illegal dumping, as has been mentioned, is happening all over the city, and it's not just in the homeless camps. And the traffic issues have been raised several times. So, Mr. City Manager, in accordance with the direction that was provided to you from Councilmember Hanson, our independent auditor went through and compared our service delivery to all of the service delivery of major cities in the United States. And in some cases, we were average. In some cases, we fell below the acceptable, the average standards across the United States. So, not just traffic management and Vision Zero. When you develop the budget for the next year, could you look at his report, identify those areas that we are insufficient across the board, and develop a budget that will bring us towards where we want to be, that is, our citizens feel that we are providing an acceptable, acceptable level of service? So, in other words, what I'm saying is, look at what we're trying to do as a city, as passing our goals. Look at where we're already deficient, where our citizens are telling us we're deficient, and come back with a budget that moves the needle on those areas where we are deficient.
Absolutely, and you must have been sitting in my staff meeting, because that is what we're, that's what's underway right now in developing the FY21 budget. I've asked the auditor to take another cut at the National Citizen Survey you're referencing and to look at those cities that are comparable to Sacramento as opposed to comparing us to a city with a population of 25,000 that doesn't have.
That's fair.
So, yes.
That's definitely fair. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Let me make a couple of final comments, if I may. First of all, Councilmember Hanson and Garrett, with regard to Vision Zero, I want to really thank you for bringing this forward and thank Ms. Wong for coming forward and making it very, very personal. You can't put a price on a life, and yet, we're dealing with a finite budget, and that's our, that's always our challenge. I think, Councilmember Hanson, bringing this forward, Councilmember Gueda's suggestion combined is a good one. I think we got to use the budget and Audit Committee, if that's the appropriate venue, to actually not wait until May for our budget, but to actually begin now, doing a couple of things, identifying either the process or substantively which particular intersections are currently, currently create the most risk. So, we know that now. We don't have to wait till after the passage of the budget to actually begin moving. To do that, and then to understand and also develop maybe a little bit more policy criteria, as we have discussed, about what should be a discretionary act by our very good staff and what should be brought back to the council in terms of decisions on some of the, frankly, engineering questions around these crosswalks. And then, if we do all that work now, by the time we get to a budget in May, and we include Vision Zero, which I would support and help co-lead here, we'll be ready to go. So, I think on the right track here. I want to thank Councilmember Shenier for really digging into this CSO issue. And not more than the CSO issue, the overtime issue, because, and we're going to have a chance in March, by the way, hopefully, if it doesn't slip, to come back with our efficiency consultants and really have a broader conversation about this, because this is an imperfect science in terms of how you quantify the necessary resources for overtime when you're dealing with staff shortages and how you add the staff and then modulate the reduction in overtime. And I think that's worth more discussion, but I think you especially hit the needle here in what you brought forward tonight, because ultimately, the reason to do the CSO is not only to provide greater coverage for our police services, which we need, but it's also to provide the pipeline for people to be able to become police officers, because that's where we really have the shortage. So, Chief, thank you, too. City Manager, thank you for that good work. What's that?
And Tim Davis.
And Tim Davis. Thank you, Tim Davis, for sitting down and working on this and, of course, agreeing to it as well. Jeff Harris on the cleanup and the illegal dumping. You're absolutely right. We cannot have a robust housing and homeless services program if we're not dealing with the effects of unsheltered homelessness, so we got to get to that quickly, too. Finally, two other points. First of all, I want to compliment, you should all listen, I want to compliment all my colleagues here. Complimented the City Manager and Don for bringing forward an excellent product, and we've all developed a very good working relationship, very grateful for that. But I want to thank my colleagues, because you have to balance, and you balance it very well, being very aggressive on behalf of your districts and your causes, and also recognizing that we're all in this together and that we want to make sure that we invest wisely and also maintain budget stability. And so, your actions here at the mid-year to sort of carry over a significant fund balance, I personally appreciate, because it gives us then the ability together to be able to craft our priorities, Measure U and beyond, beyond the Measure U. And this is where I want to focus you just for a moment substantively, because I think it's important. That's why I asked, I didn't want the Measure G sheet up, Jay. I wanted just the original, the original budget up. So, this is, you know, a fair picture, and here's what it tells us, and this is for the public, too. We're going to carry over, and I know I'm not using exactly the right vernacular, so please excuse me, Don, but, you know, we're going to have about $36 million at our disposal when you look at the 1920 and the 2021, okay? We want to frame this budget discussion coming up in a variety of ways. I'm going to have my state of the city. We're going to have our budget deliberations. I'm going to confer with all of you, obviously with the City Manager. I would like to use a substantial portion of that going forward for essentially neighborhood-based economic development investment, as we have talked about. But I would also like to make sure that we take a robust portion of that and we put it into our fund balance or to the public in our reserve account. And here's why. Because when you look at 2122, you see a deficit of about $21 million. Now, take any range of number, I don't want to do the numbers now, but it's, we have $36 million. So, you can take a percentage and say, what if we put that into fund reserve? We're essentially then have the opportunity to take care of a significant portion of 2122, which means that next year, we can be in a position, again, where we're reinvesting in inclusive economic development, core city services, as we're doing tonight with the CSOs, and other, and Vision Zero and all the other major city priorities. So, there is a little bit of a method to the madness here, even though it is imperfect. And the other thing is that the city budget team appropriately, appropriately considers revenue usually in a rather conservative way. I mean, because, and they should. And so, what we find is that as long as the economy remains in good shape, which is, you know, a variable that we don't completely control, and we have another, another year or two of a decent economy that usually comes in a little better than what's even projected on this paper. So, I look at all of this, and I say, nothing is perfect, but we can accomplish so many of our goals. We can implement Measure U with fidelity, including youth, by the way, as a top priority. We can, we can advance core city services, like what we're doing tonight with the CSOs, and we can work our way through the red ink and maintain fiscal stability. So, this is a good move tonight, and I'm very, very appreciative of the collaborative approach everywhere to help make this happen. All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Thank you very much. Let us, let us move now to the final item for the evening, which is file item 28. Councilman Harris, do you have something that you need to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, last week, the council received a letter on behalf of the opponents of the Two Rivers Trail, wherein they asserted that I should recuse myself from this decision because they own property within 1,000 feet of the project footprint. Now, last year, the FPPC increased their conflict of radius, conflict of interest radius from 500 feet to 1,000 feet. So, a change in policy from the last few years. My residence currently is about 930 feet from the nearest point of the proposed bike trail. Of course, I immediately asked the city attorney to advise me on whether she agreed that there was a potential conflict of interest. She recommended that, under these particular facts, that I should recuse myself. Although I firmly believe that the fact that my home is located nearly 1,000 feet away from the project and that that would not compromise my ability to act in a manner consistent with my duty, to act in the best interest of the public, I have decided to follow the district, or the city attorney's recommendation and recuse myself from the matter so that the council can continue to consider this very important project without any distraction or appearance that I might receive a personal benefit.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. We appreciate it and your hard work. Let us hear the presentation. How many people do we have signed up for this item, Madam Clerk?
I have 18 people signed up on this item.
Okay. It's 18 people. That's fine. Let us hear the staff presentation. We'll then hear the public testimony, and then we will consider the item.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name is Adam Randolph, and I'm a senior engineer with the Engineering Services Division of the Public Works Department. The purpose of this council item is to certify the environmental impact report for the Two Rivers Trail project, Phase Two, including adopting the finding of facts in the mitigation and monitoring plan and to approve the preliminary plans for segments three through six of the trail. I'm going to briefly go through the basics of what's involved in this trail, where it is, what it looks like, the processes that we followed for this environmental document, and discuss some of the alternatives, as well as show something of the impacts that were looked at. So, this environmental impact report includes two separate regions for the project. The first region, referred to as segments one and two in the document, is between the Sacramento Northern Trail and Sutter's Landing Park. The second region, referred to as segments three through six, is between the end of the current Sutter's Landing Trail at the Union Pacific Railroad and the H Street Bridge. Currently, the city has funding for design and construction of the second region, which is roughly a 2.4-mile It is broken down into multiple segments, segments three through six, because of the geometry of the levee and the riverbank in that area. Segments three and five would be placed at the waterside bottom of the levee. Segment four would be placed at the top of the levee. And then, segment six would be a transition from the waterside bottom up to the current trail location at H Street Bridge. This trail fills a critical gap for the city's American and Sacramento River Parkway plans, or Parkway Implementation Program, which was adopted by council in 2012. So, we've been working on this environmental document for quite some time. The environmental, or, there were some preliminary outreach efforts made with the public, starting with implementation plan in 2012, as well as some of our concept development phase of the project and through our grant applications. However, in the last couple of years, since we've received some substantial grant funding that allow for this environmental document and construction, staff have attended multiple Neighborhood Association general meetings in River Park. We've in River Park. We've attended county parks meetings. We've attended flood control district meetings, and we've hosted three separate public meetings reviewing the environmental document. Staff initially drafted a mitigated negative declaration sequo document. However—this was completed in late 20—sorry, I'm missing dates on here. This was completed in late 2018, but after comments were given, comments received, and given a modification to the project with a variance allowed by the Flood Control District, staff made the determination that the document should be upgraded to a full environmental impact report, or EIR. For the EIR, the city has held two public meetings. Comments from the mitigated negative declaration document prior were incorporated into the new document, and during the review period, staff received multiple comment letters from agencies and the public. After that review period closed, staff continued to receive and review additional comment letters and have provided these letters to council for consideration. After a review of all of the comment letters, including letters that were received today, staff believes that they do not contain any significant new information. When we analyzed how we could lay out this trail, we looked at multiple options, including placing the trail on the top of the levee, placing the trail on the bottom waterside of the levee, and placing the trail midway up the levee, and also included combinations of these three options. Due to the requirements of the Flood Control District, the requirements of the Army Corps of Engineers, and the limitations of terrain on site, the only feasible alternative that staff has found that accomplishes the city's goal of creating a riverside trail is the preferred alternative that was described earlier. The Army Corps of Engineers has recently released a project where they're planning to construct bank protection along this stretch of the river encompassing about half of our project's footprint. City staff is actively coordinating with the Army Corps' project manager to ensure that both of these projects can be constructed without conflict. Technical studies have been conducted analyzing project impacts, as well as cumulative impacts with all of the other known planned projects in this area. And on your screen, it's listed a few of the highlights and potential impacts that were analyzed. Staff has determined that all of these impacts analyzed can be reduced to less than significant with the proposed mitigation measures. So at this time, staff would like to recommend that the city certify the EIR, adopt the finding of facts and mitigation monitoring plan, and approve preliminary plans for segments 3 through 6 of the Two Rivers Trail. Thank you.
So any other part of the presentation?
That is all of the presentation.
So reading the EIR just briefly. So you considered the comments. You wrote and concluded that the impacts were below—were not significant enough to warrant either a denial of the project or any additional mitigation beyond what has already been proposed, correct?
Correct. So we analyzed all of the potential impacts. We found some areas that were potential impacts, but given the mitigation measures that were—have been proposed in our mitigation and monitoring plan, those are enough to reduce the level of those impacts to a less-than-significant level.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Let's hear from the public.
I have 17 speakers. Gregory Jaminski, then Betsy Wyland, then Stephanie Jantich. Is Gregory here?
Yes.
Thank you. Please come to the podium when I call your name. So Gregory, then Betsy Wyland, then Stephanie Jantich.
Evening, sir. Everyone has two minutes, by the way. That is the rule. So please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for hearing out my comments. My name is Greg Jamnitsky. My wife and I have been River Park residents for over 35 years. I have only two points to make. Paving the Twin Rivers section of the river represents a potential danger not anticipated by the EIR. It's a danger to the adjoining community. It's a danger to East Sacramento. The paving will increase the homeless population due to the greater access that paving provides. I intend to establish that this is absolutely not a NIMBY, not my neighborhood kind of thing, that there are some serious issues afoot here. Issue two is the EIR, as presented to us for the Twin Rivers project, is flawed and nowhere near comprehensive enough to reflect the current state of the section of the levee where the danger is being subjected to it. Point one, why the project is flawed. Last summer, 2019, a representative of the police came to one of our neighborhood meetings. He told us the force is stressed and understaffed and cannot manage monitoring the levee. He told us that a patrol had encountered a homeless cave dug into the levee, complete with an earthen bench and a table. Let me say again, a cave was dug out of the levee. How stable is the levee now? Once the EIR report is done and the homeless will still be there, who's going to monitor that situation? Who's going to establish the stability of that? What other structures are being built that we don't even know about? Is the levee in danger? The mayor's plan for homelessness is bold and can't be expected to remediate dangers to the levee over time. The authors of the EIR were asked if they had done any research on the studies that were done, such as the city departments or the states—SAC states Institute for Social Research. We were told, well, not really, but we do know somebody in the police department. And I asked him. So this project has been down to a guy—
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
—who told them information.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Betsy Wyland, then Stephanie Jantich.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Betsy Wyland, and I'm here this evening speaking for Save the American River Association. I apologize to the City Council for the late delivery of our recent comment letter. And the reason why it was late was because I have never, in the 19-plus years of writing comment letters on EIRs, had such a difficult time reconciling what I was reading and the conclusions with what I know to be on the ground in the American River Parkway. As you listen to testimony tonight, I would like to set your mind here. The Parkway has succeeded in large part over the years because it is a continuous green belt. So from Discovery Park to Folsom Lake, we have the public enjoying the same experience. What I want for everyone as you're thinking about this—certifying this final EIR—is to think of a Parkway in those terms. What harms the Parkway in Orangevale harms the Parkway in Discovery Park or Sutter's Landing. Please do not cut off the ability to continue to massage this project, to work through the issues. How we got to this point, it is not a question of no bicycle trail. We don't want this. We don't want that. We want a good project, and we want it to be a true project. Please do not certify the FEIR tonight. Send us back to the drawing board. There are many of us who can work cooperatively with the city. We've done it before. I challenge you to find a project that didn't go better than Township 9.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
All right. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate your attention.
Next speaker is Stephanie Jantich, then Tony Mater.
Hello, members of the council. Thanks for letting us talk tonight. My name is Stephanie Yench, and my family and I regularly use the area that's proposed for paving. And I wanted to present a few points for you to consider tonight. The area proposed for paving is currently used by hundreds of walkers, runners, and families to enjoy nature. It's one of the last unpaved portions of the Parkway, and there are many, many of us who truly enjoy and love and use this area. While the proposed project claims to increase access to recreation and fill critical transportation gaps, what it's actually going to do is create conflicts between pedestrians and cyclists and displace current users of this area. I actually brought a picture, and I think—I can show it here? Does that work? The lower picture is a picture of the portion of the Parkway proposed to be paved, and the upper picture is the area that was paved just recently next to Sutter's Landing. So you can see it's going to very much change the nature of this area, and pavement shouldn't be the only way to enjoy the Parkway. This project, as I think you can also see from this picture, is going to involve significant environmental impacts and result in exorbitant mitigation costs for those impacts. This is not a good use of funds, especially when there are alternative designs that could be considered that would avoid these impacts. Currently, the top of the levee is a wide, unvegetated area. Moving the trail to the top of the levee would not only reduce impacts to the environment, but to those of us who are current users. And I would urge you to take some time to allow additional consideration of alternative designs.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Tony Mater, then Kate Riley. Ms. Tony Mater?
I also have a photo. My name is Tony Mater, and I've lived in River Park for 15 years. I visit the area of this project almost every day. I support biking, and I love the Parkway, but I don't believe the city needs a redundant bike trail on the south side of the river when one already exists on the north side. We don't need to pave everything. We see everywhere along the paved section substantial unmet needs and environmental degradation. I am the author of the video released last month with 25,000 views that shows the current state of Two Rivers Trail Phase 1. Since the project being considered today is Phase 2, the next phase of the same project, you can understand why we're concerned. In addition to the video, we have submitted dozens of photos demonstrating a failure to manage the paved sections of the Parkway. We're heading out those photos, and this is one of them. It paints a horrible picture of the environmental degradation occurring under the city's management of Phase 1. Some have criticized my video because Phase 1 is near impacted areas of the city where there are concentrations of homeless near services. So of course, why would it be surprising? But that is why I also included in the video other large camps that exist on the paved section of the river opposite of River Park, miles away from centralized services. The EIR that the council is considering today is very clear. That assumes no additional resources are needed for maintenance or enforcement. However, maintenance and enforcement is clearly what the city needs instead of more pavement. The city needs to show us that they have the situation in hand before they open up another area to these same impacts, in this case, an area that runs the length of the neighborhood for 2 and 1/2 miles behind homes. Consideration of the EIR is also premature. The Army Corps of Engineers will begin a bank protection project later this year in the same area that will significantly impact the baseline conditions of the EIR. We strongly urge the council to postpone certification of the EIR until after the Army Corps project concludes. If you feel it's absolutely necessary to approve the EIR today, at the very least, the council should postpone the paving project until after the Army Corps project.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Riley. Following Kate Riley is Tandra Wright.
Hi. My name's Kate Riley. Thanks for listening to me. I've lived in River Park for 35 years, and I guess I'd like to focus today on environmental justice and the Two Rivers Trail. I'm—of course, you know that the City Council has rightfully reoriented its planning process to consider environmental justice as part of the planning process. But my concern is that if this project is approved, this goal will be set back by millions of dollars. How can that be? Because this project was first initiated in 2001, long before the City Council was facing the fact that there's a great inequity in infrastructure in this city. The Bike Master Plan equity map shows East Sacramento and River Park are one of the best-served areas in the entire city in bicycle infrastructure. Yet this proposal would spend $6.4 million for a small segment of trail which exactly mirrors the trail across the river, and in the city website's own words, "This trail will provide residents of River Park and East Sacramento a safe, convenient, and protected path into downtown Sacramento." This proposal, then, is using the state and federal funds to help a district that already has too many—not—it's hard to have too many bicycle facilities, but it has a lot. So by saying no to this project, you are preserving an irreplaceable resource, aligning city planning with environmental justice goals, and saving money, too. Thank you for listening.
Tandra Wright, then Nancy McKenzie.
Thank you, City Council members. My name's Tandra Wright. I'm an avid cyclist, a member of SABA, and a member of numerous running groups throughout the Sacramento area. We have 13,000 strong among all your districts. Someday, I would support a connection between the Two Rivers, but not—pardon me, not today, and specifically not this project. I visit the area of this project with my gravel bike regularly with my dog and enjoying nature. However, primarily due to the environmental impact and the degradation plaguing the south end of the American River Trail, it's—that's currently—that is currently happening. This last October, I was nearly accosted with a sledgehammer by a man living on one of the—in one of the encampments along the south end of the ARP while riding my bicycle on the trail, an area that is shown in numerous videos to be severely polluted and generally unsafe to the large homeless encampments allowed by the city to reside in the area. Wildfires have been started, and large portions of the levee have been evacuated, making it extremely hazardous to our community. Nearly every time I run along the paved sections of the ARP from Guy West Bridge with my running groups, we encounter trash, needles, and human feces. Most of us volunteer in trail cleanup projects only to have those areas polluted again. We take pictures. We post to the city's social media websites. We report, and nothing is done. The city seems to have turned a blind eye to the issue. While I understand that the homeless population has its needs, the levees are being dug out for windbreaks, dangerous crimes are being committed, and a fragile urban ecosystem is being destroyed by encampments. I understand there are limitations for municipalities due to the Boise decision. However, I cannot support a $6 million project that will bring little improvement and more degradation to the ARP, not to mention channels—transportation funding to other road projects and trails. Maybe someday I could support a better plan and safer project, but not today and out the larger issues facing our city. Again, I ask that we postpone the decision this evening due to the Army Corps of Engineers construction, and at least minimally moving forward with the paving project until the impacts of the Army Corps project are clearly specified. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nancy McKenzie. Following Ms. McKenzie is Amanda Morrow.
Good evening. My name is Nancy McKenzie, and I've lived in Sacramento for more than 30 years and in River Park for about 25. Since then, I've enjoyed the River Park area of this project nearly every day, either walking or bicycling. I support biking, but this bike three-way project should not come at the expense of opportunities to enjoy natural areas like this area, which are rare in Sacramento. The project, even with the narrowing the trail portion along River Park and posting speed limits, would increase the number of bikers on the trail, at the same time allowing those bicycles to travel at much higher speeds, inevitably resulting in an increase in conflicts and collisions between pedestrians, many of whom are families with small children and bike through traffic, thus increasing the need for emergency and police services. The project would decrease the feeling of peace and tranquility experienced by the people who visit and use the currently natural area. The change from informal to formal recreational use and development as a result of the project have the potential to place additional stress on natural resources by, among other issues, leading to the accumulation of trash and other sources of pollution associated with formal recreational use, as well as exacerbating fire and safety issues. And the project does not have a mechanism for increasing the public services that would be required as a result of the project. My letter is dated August 30th and February 2nd, which I sent to all of you. Go in more detail on these and other project issues. Finally, the Army Corps will begin construction later this year on the Finally, the Army Corps will begin construction later this year on the bank protection project in the same area. The Corps will affect many of the same resources on this project. The Corps, impacts of the Corps project could change the baseline condition for the trail project and further narrow the options for avoiding or mitigating impacts that affect the baseline conditions in the EIR. We have urged you to postpone certification of the EIR, but if you feel the EIR is adequate, even given this lack of information, and are determined to approve it today-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Amanda Morrow, then Pamela Jan Kennedy.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Amanda Morrow, and I've lived in River Park for 12 years. My home is located directly adjacent to the levee. I moved to River Park because I've been visiting this portion of the parkway since I was in high school, and let's not count those types of years. I'm now able to visit this area of the project just about every day with my dog to unwind from work. I support biking and I love the parkway, but I'm disappointed with the EIR and the proposed project for various reasons. The FEIR failed to consider a no-pavement alternative for this project. The area already has an existing dirt trail, as Stephanie showed you, that is connected to the paved trail at H Street and Sutter's Landing that is used extensively by a wide variety of users, including a variety of bicyclists. I see them every day. A no-pavement alternative could have analyzed the administrative changes that would be needed to legally allow bicyclists to use the existing trails, similar to the current county off-pave trail cycling pilot program that's in the Wood Lake and Callexville areas of the American River Parkway. The failure of the EIR alternative is directly attributed to the city failing to acknowledge or survey the current users of the project area. Save Don't Pave did extensive outreach to the River Park neighborhood, as well as those who come from elsewhere into this area by performing essentially a traffic count and interviewing people at the Glen Hall Park entrance to the American River Parkway. We found this portion of the parkway is used extensively by families, children, nature lovers, dog walkers, bicyclists of all types, and yes, even persons in wheelchairs, specifically because of the lack of high-speed bicycle traffic in this area. This is a unique environment in Sacramento. It's the last section of the American River Parkway without a dedicated bikeway, providing unique opportunities for pedestrians, children, nature enthusiasts, and yes, bicyclists, to experience a quiet, safe, natural environment right in the heart of Sacramento. To pave the trail will eliminate an irreplaceable respite from the built environment. Considering the extensive use of the area in its current natural state, I'm imploring the council, please, to reconsider executing this project, and instead preserving this segment in the American River Parkway as an unpaved recreational trail.
Thank you. Next speaker is Pamela Jan Kennedy. Pamela? I don't see Pamela. Osha Mizerv. Lynette Scolaro Plasios. And then Tom Bigleoni. Is Osha here?
Thank you.
My name is Osha Mizerv, and I'm here representing Save Don't Pave. We've submitted various comment letters, part of the record, but just want to highlight a couple of key points about why we're asking that you not approve this project and not certify the EIR tonight. As has been discussed, there is another levee improvement project that's underway, and that really will probably change the physical environment and the baseline in this area. And it would be much better to try to integrate planning of a trail with whatever levee improvements are needed, whichever important for protecting public health and safety. Also, I think it's important to point out that this trail actually doesn't connect River Park to downtown. That still hasn't been worked out, so again, that does point toward a need to come up with a better plan. If the goal really is to connect this area of the parkway, and if it really is necessary and to serve the community, it really should connect. Just doing another segment without dealing with the connection issue does not help bikers. And as you've heard tonight as well, there's a lot of need and interest in using unpaved sections of the trail, so there is a lot of good recreational use coming out of this part of the parkway. In addition, I think there really is, I read in the staff report, that staff has concluded that, you know, there really won't be any more services needed as a result of opening up the trail, and I think that really defies common sense, as well as a lot of the information that's been submitted to you in pictures and otherwise by folks concerned about the trail. So I would ask that you look at alternatives. A lot have been suggested in terms of using the top of the levee potentially, having a dirt trail. There's a lot of ways to reduce the impacts and maybe improve the recreation in this area that would be more compatible with what the residents of the area would like, and that would be helpful for the overall parkway, as you heard from parkway advocates. So we're asking that you not certify the EIR tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lynette Scolaro Plasios, and then Tom Bigleoni.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. This is a picture that was taken of the Phase One trail, and this is the encampment that's along that portion of the trail. I have lived in River Park for 33-plus years, and I am very passionate about the beauty of this river and this area that we love to go over and enjoy this little bit of nature. This EIR states that it assumes that there's no additional resources that are needed for maintenance or enforcement if the city assumes stewardship of the Two Rivers Trail Phase Two. But the city does not have sufficient staff trained in the special needs of a natural park. The city is assuming that it can do adequate job of stewardship for these areas with their parks and public work staff. Those staff are trained for work in urban environments, not in maintenance and enhancement of the natural environment. The city's Two Rivers Trail Phase One has damaged portions of the American River Park Trail. Two Rivers Trail Phase One, Northern Sacramento Bikeway, and Sutter's Landing Park are all in much worse shape since the city assumed major responsibility for this area of the American River Parkway, including widespread illegal camping, loss of riparian habitat, failed mitigation plantings, explosion of invasive plants, overflowing garbage, fires, and excessive eucaliptus in the American River. Given that failure, is it prudent for the city council to assume responsibility for two and a half more miles of parkway? And even this evening, it has been discussed that there is a problem with the budget and not having enough, you know, staff to clean up the garbage on the streets. So considering those challenges that the city's facing, this is just going to be added to that.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Tom Bigleoni, then Delsey Steffi.
Good evening. I'm Tom Bigleoni. I'm a resident at 525th Street, a volunteer with Friends of Sutter Landing, and a volunteer with the American River Parkway. I spend quite a bit of time out on the river. I'm not too much of a cyclist. I mostly canoe, or I'm on the shoresides picking up litter. So I'm speaking to you from that context. Most recently, I've been working down at Sutter's Landing, doing weeding around the restoration projects right there by the skate park and down below off the levee top. I also have friends who are cyclists. They commute, they move back and forth from River Park into city and home at night, and they see a lot of the same things that I see. And what I'm going to comment on are these things. One is, the top of the levee is the best place for a bike path. I know the speed limit is 15. Most of the cyclists try to adhere to that, many don't. Putting the cyclist on the top of the bike path and on the wide right-of-way of that is by far the safest thing for anybody else, walking their dog or just walking with a friend and carrying on a casual conversation. Second thing is that you saw one of the first speakers up here this evening set some slides down, and you can see how wide the right-of-way is for the existing paved path that runs from Sutter's Landing to the railroad trestle, upriver toward the railroad trestle. That is, that's what, more than 40%, 30, more than 30%, probably 40% of the habitat that would exist between the toe of the levee and the water's edge is taken up by that bike path that could have been up on top of the levee. Now, you can't mitigate against that. I mean, that's like cutting off my arm and saying, well, we're going to mitigate that and sew another one on-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
What's that?
Your time is complete.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. But you got the picture.
Our next speaker is Delsey Steffi, then Jeremiah Rohr.
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak. My name's Delsey Steffi, and I am a real estate broker here in Sacramento, and I've been working in real estate for about 15 years. I've lived in Sacramento for 19 years, and before that, I've lived in New York City. I've lived in upstate New York. I tell everyone that Sacramento is my favorite place I've ever lived because it's the perfect combination of city and nature. And I believe very passionately, the American River and all of the access to it is one of my top 10 things that's great about Sacramento that I tell people all the time. And I am extremely concerned that this very special, unique access to nature will be destroyed by the increase of traffic and by having a paved pathway. My daughter and I used to live in Fair Oaks. I have commuted on the American River Parkway. It's easy to get downtown on the trail. I used to live in Fair Oaks and commute to Caesar Chavez Park. We don't need it for recreation or for transportation, and we've seen a number of incidents, including an incident where a homeless person was attempting to abduct a child. We called the police. I have, there's a police report that can be found about it. A jogger, and my daughter and I intercepted him. There is not enough enforcement, but this is a special access to nature that children and families enjoy. And speaking as a parent of an African-American child in an urban environment, I know there's nowhere else in the country where she would have access like this to nature, and I don't want you to pave paradise. It's Paradise Beach. We've met beautiful people from all over the city enjoying it, and I really have a great fear that it will be destroyed and degraded with the paved trail.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeremiah Rohr, then Deborah Banks.
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Rohr. I'm a citizen cyclist of the city. Want to support the amendment as the resolution is going forward. I believe this issue has been studied far too long, and we've, it's part of the plan that we want to keep going forward. Some of the arguments of, well, there's a trail on the other side of the river, tell me how to get over to that trail, and back and forth across the city. Access across the river is almost nil for cyclists. I'm a person that gave up my car a couple of years ago and strictly ride a bicycle, and we do not have enough access. People say, oh, there's plenty of access for bicycles all over the city, but you can't have enough. And we were just talking about Vision Zero earlier. I mean, this is part of that plan to look at the city in a different way and try to create better paths along all of our thoroughfares. This is an integral part of the trail and needs to be, I think, the NIMBY attitude of this particular neighborhood does not take in the fact that this is a citywide project and it affects the entire city, not just that neighborhood. So we have to think of it as a city on a whole, and we need to be able to move this forward and make this trail happen. The thought of homeless, homelessness is a problem throughout the city, and it is not just confined to city trails. If we were able to lock off all the areas and not have, people would still have homeless people, there are still homeless people there now, even though it's not protected.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
I support this resolution.
Our next speaker is Deborah Banks, then Isaac Gonzalez.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Deb Banks, and I'm currently the acting executive director of SABHA, so you know that I'm a bicycle advocate, and I ride my bike almost every day. I live over in East Sacramento, over in Campus Commons, and so I come over the Guy West Bridge, and I hang a ride, and I come into town. These days, I come up H Street, and I have to cross underneath 30th and Alhambra, et cetera, which is actually really somewhat dangerous, and there are homeless people that live there as well. I'm a pretty savvy cyclist, so I just move my way forward and I keep going. When I'm on the weekends, sometimes I am on this trail that we're talking about here. And I can tell you that as a cyclist, I have been up on the levee, I have been down on trails that people hike on and walk on, and people are generally, by and large, really courteous of each other. We slow down as cyclists, we are careful about animals and dogs. You know, all of us are very conscientious about the other people there, too. So I encourage you guys to move forward with this environmental impact report, because frankly, moving down through the trail into town is way safer than getting off the trail and spending more time on our city streets, which we've talked about earlier with Vision Zero as being, you know, a problem for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I have four more speakers on the side, and the next is Isaac Gonzalez and Steve Harriman.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Isaac Gonzalez. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Sacramento. I'm currently the president of the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. I'm here to speak in favor tonight of the EIR for the Two Rivers Trail, and I encourage you to vote on it tonight so we can move forward. You know, there's a lot of things in this city that we would like to consider to be world-class. Word gets tossed around a lot. I think one day we will have a real world-class amenity in this city, and it'll be the multi-use trail that starts in Folsom and ends in Freeport. We're going to get there one day. We won't have to get off the bike path or the multi-use path, and we're going to get there, and it's going to happen, and this is going to be a part of it. So the fact that all of it isn't ready and that all of it won't come online as soon as this trail does, to me, is not a factor in your consideration tonight. We're going to get there. We're getting there piecemeal, little by little, but one day, it really will be glorious when we get there, and this is a really important part of that. Luckily, though, you're not making a binary decision, and I really respect all the advocates who have spoken for their neighborhood and their community who live near this piece of infrastructure. Because you vote for the EIR tonight doesn't mean that we can't do other things as well. We are addressing our homeless situation, and I don't want to say homeless situation. I don't like that phrase. People currently experiencing homelessness. We say the word homelessness like homelessness encampment and homelessness, but I think it dehumanizes this issue. For our homeless, people who are experiencing homelessness crisis, we're working on that. By not certifying this EIR doesn't make any of those people go away. We're going to help them, we're going to build great trails, we're doing great things all over the city with Vision Zero and other projects. You know, the city has a lot of really great momentum right now, and a lot of it is because of the people who spoke before me tonight, who speak on behalf of their neighborhood. So a lot of respect to them, but I know that in the years to come, we're going to make great strides moving forward, do great things, and this is a piece of it, so I wholly suggest you approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Harriman, then Phil Pluckbaum.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Steve Harriman. My wife Julie and I have resided on Sandberg Drive in River Park for 17 years. We're less than 300 feet from the alignment of the proposed trail. We are strong supporters of the Two Rivers Bike Trail and urge you to move forward tonight. I want to talk first about connectivity. In the summer of 1982, I was home from college, and I had an internship downtown. I didn't have a car in those days, so I rode my bike every day from Carmichael in, from the east on the bike trail. I crossed the Guy West Bridge, and then you basically have nowhere to go. So I went through Sac State, out J Street, through East Sacramento, across Alhambra, across 30th. That was 38 years ago, and I was wishing in those days that there was a way on the south side of the American River from the Guy West Bridge to midtown, there was a way to connect that. Of course, 38 years ago, there was, the 28th Street landfill was there, so it wasn't possible. But it is possible today. We have an amazing 33-mile system. This is a critical 2.4-mile stretch of trail that increases safety and convenience for everybody. I want to bring up the issue. This is a map. This is showing River Park, and this is Paradise Beach, and this would be basically the proposed alignment of the trail. So the trail is something like 16 feet wide. There's, from that point to the river, it's over 1,300 feet, so there is absolutely ample space for walking and hiking and birdwatching. There's tons of space down there for people to continue to enjoy nature. My last thing is, I want to address safety. I truly believe that the paved trail is the safest part of the American River Parkway. I have friends who are females, and when they run, by the- I have friends who are females and when they run by themselves, they will only run on the paved trail because there are other walkers and cyclists all with cell phones. So this is a fantastic project and I urge you to move forward.
I wanna ask a quick question, if I may, based upon Mr. Harriman's letter here, and this is to staff. Mr. Harriman states in his letter that, as he has surveyed the entire River Parkway, that 3 to 6% of the existing trail system is visibly impacted with homeless encampments and 94 to 97% of the existing trail system has no visible homeless encampments. Do you wanna?
Yes, please.
Say what your methodology was and I'd like to ask staff to respond to that claim.
Yeah, I was just responding to the point that there's a direct correlation between a paved trail and homeless activity. And so my wife and I actually just did some visual surveying. Based upon that, we think that about one to two miles of the current trail system is impacted by homeless activity. All of that, for the most part, is on the west side because of proximity to social services. So that means that something like 95 or 96% of the current paved trail system is not impacted by homeless activity. And so I just think it's, it's not correct logic to say that there is a direct correlation between those two things.
Thank you. I'd like to hear staff respond to that claim.
As staff, I don't think we've done a comprehensive trail analysis like that to measure the kind of linear length of impacts, but that reflects the opinion of staff that there really does not appear to be a direct correlation between paving a trail and the presence of people experiencing homelessness.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Phil Pluckbaum and then Asha Krailing.
I answered anything.
Hi, Phil.
Evening, mayor and council. Thank you for hearing this item. I just wanted to draw your attention to the overhead and before you, as a petition with over 1,200 signatures in support of this project, I'm here in support of the project and the staff recommendation. I'd now like to slowly read all 1,200 signatures for your benefit. No, in light of that, I'll, what I will say is, I just, I urge you your support for this trail. We talk about it a lot as a bike trail. I will certainly use it in that context, but it is a multi-use trail. It will improve equitable access for people of all modes and abilities to get down to the, to the real jewel of our region, the American River Parkway. And with that, I urge and I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Asha Krailing is our final speaker on this item.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Asha Krailing. I'm a resident of District Three and I work here in District Four. This morning, I submitted my letter in support of the resolution before you today and I'm here to encourage you to vote yes to move forward with this important trail project. The Two Rivers Trail will close a crucial missing link in Sacramento's bikeway network by creating a continuous and direct route between Sac State and the midtown grid completely separate from vehicle traffic. One of my coworkers who lives at Fair Oaks and Howe Avenue wanted to ride her bike to work downtown. And knowing that I'm an avid cyclist, she asked me for tips on the safest way to get downtown for a novice bike commuter, so she could save gas and not have to pay for parking downtown. The on-street route I offered her was complicated and too scary for her, so she continues to drive her car to work every day. The Two Rivers Trail will take cars off the road and with the mitigation measures proposed, this project will have significant environmental benefits for Sacramento. One of the commenters in opposition to this project focused on the failure to address environmental justice in this project. I would like to disagree with that sentiment and emphasize the value of this project that it will have, not just with our members who ride bicycles and residents of East Sacramento, but for these very environmental justice communities that need safe and sustainable access to Sacramento's downtown grid. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have no more public comments on this item.
All right. Thank you very much for the public testimony. Let's hear from members of the city council now. Councilmember Hanson is the only one currently up.
Thank you, mayor. I'm gonna do my best to channel both sides of this conversation as we work through some things here, but it's not lost on me that the people, the person who is most knowledgeable about this is not here right now. And I understand that. That's just the nature of how these things happen. In fact, at the American River Flood Control Board, one of the people who was opposed to the trail got conflicted out for the very same reason. So I guess an eye for an eye. It makes us, it's whatever. But I guess, I was, I was asked by some of the people to, who are advocating for this to talk about it and probably because we've worked very hard in District Four and I'm an avid cyclist, although after I broke my leg falling down my front stairs in my bike shoes, I biked less. But I, I've been up and down the American River Trail from Beale's Point and back many times. I obviously am familiar with the homelessness issue. We have a debate in my district, well, a newer debate about the Del Rio Trail, which councilmember Chenier and I worked on to get funded through Southland Park. And now, one of my neighborhood associations, not Southland Park Neighborhood Association, but another is saying, some of the things that Save Don't Pave is saying. And then we obviously have the ongoing debate about this, the Sacramento River Trail. Unlike those, the Del Rio Trail was public property. We're working through private property issues in the Sacramento River Trail, but this is public property. And I think that's where we end up in this, how do we ensure that public property is used for the betterment, not just of the residents who live most proximate, but for the, for the people also beyond that who have an interest in it. And, you know, Betsy's here from Save the American River Association. And I, I think SAR has done an amazing job trying to protect the American River Parkway. But, you know, we're gonna have to make a decision tonight. And I think the basic decision is just on the matter of law, whether or not there are significant impacts or not for the EIR. And I, I think that the, the legal conclusion, as I see it, and you know, there's plenty of facts on the record to support it, is that there is not a significant impact that has to be mitigated here that is not already contemplated. And so I don't think, from a legal standpoint, and you can sue us, that's what we're used to, we get sued all the time, but I think that we don't really have a legal reason not to approve the EIR. Then is there a policy reason not to approve the EIR? I think that that, that's a call that we're, we're wrestling with, not on this project necessarily, but everyone's thinking, how do we get enough money into our trail system to fund the maintenance and operations to ensure that they're being maintained to the greatest extent? The American River Parkway, I think it's not a secret, is, is really controlled and managed by Sacramento County and God bless them for doing all the work that they do, but they don't have sufficient support for, from the taxpayers to invest in the American River Parkway's 33-plus miles. This particular section would be a city-maintained portion. And, you know, I don't think, even though we had our mid-year budget, we are yet prepared, but I would say to the mayor that there's an opportunity as we go forward, just like we talked about with Vision Zero. These trails are a jewel. I agree with Mr. Gonzalez that these are important, but the city's maintenance of these trails falls into the same skinny public works to budget that has to fix so many things. And so, much like Vision Zero, we don't have a sustainable funding source other than Measure A, which is inadequate in, in a lot of ways for, for the standard of service that the community is demanding. So that's the kind of conversation we could also have. We're having that at the Sacramento Transportation Authority about how to bring more funding in. Saba's been part of that, is part of SAC Moves and the Smart Coalition. SAR probably will oppose what we do. I'm sorry, Betsy, but I know it's hard to support a bridge over the American River. But we are trying to see how we leverage these resources from state, federal funds into these projects. And, and honestly, I think the voters writ large, if you look at the polling, this is countywide, not necessarily people sitting on either side of the aisle today. They want these amenities. And now we have to rise to the challenge of how do we provide for them? So, one of the questions I have, Adam, and that was a long, like, segue. Is the funding here to build this trail? Do we, have we, are we fully funded?
Yes, we are fully funded for this project. We, or fairly recently received money through SB1, which is an active transportation program grant that funds all of the needed mitigation and construction for the trail.
Thank you. That is highly unusual that we have a project that is fully funded. And so that, that reflects a lot of different things. SB1 is competitive, but I know councilmember Jennings, councilmember Chenier, myself, we fight for funding all the time, but that is a very unique thing that we can't let slip that if we have the funding to do this. Now, I'm, I'm prepared to make the motion to approve the staff recommendation, but I just wanna add one minor caveat. I don't know if, it's more an idea. As we're talking to the residents in Land Park over the Del Rio Trail, whether or not there's not an opportunity here to create an adopted trail program through a nonprofit, maybe it's not SAR, maybe it's something else, but to leverage contributions to ensure that some of the things that the neighbors really are concerned about, that we bring in some resources through that, that we really work, what is appropriate level of funding for operations and maintenance? I, representing a community that is very sophisticated, know that River Park and ESAC are extremely sophisticated communities. And you, when you want to see something happen, you can do it. And so I think there's a little bit of a opportunity here to rise to the occasion and see if we can't, through this particular area, create a similar adopted trail nonprofit that could bring in resources to help supplement what the city's doing and leverage maybe some private grants to do that as well. And so that's not a council direction, it's more of a sophisticated idea that could be embraced if people really want to. But I, I see this as happening, the funding is there, the EIR is there, and I'd gladly make a motion to approve the item.
Moved and seconded. Let's hear from the remaining council members who are up. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of questions from the comments that we have received. Was there a no pavement alternative study?
We considered that comment and because the no pavement alternative was, was very similar to the no project alternative, those were the same. So we evaluated the no pavement alternative under the no project alternative, which is required for the EIR.
Okay. And did we look at the conflicts between bicyclists and pedestrians when we were examining alternatives?
So, we haven't seen strong evidence on existing trails of large conflicts between bicycles and pedestrians. However, in working with the community, we did hear those concerns and we actually modified what this trail would look like to help accommodate that. That modification involved narrowing the paved portion of the trail down further, widening the unpaved shoulder for, or to accommodate pedestrians who are comfortable there. So there is actually larger separated areas if people feel uncomfortable walking where bikes are traveling.
Okay. And a couple of speakers brought up the notion that the Army Corps of Engineers is gonna have a project there that may influence the baseline for this project?
So, the Army Corps, Corps of Engineers has a planned bank protection project. It's actually a pretty expensive, extensive project all along the, or this section of the American River, specifically within our project's footprint. It is overlapping from Glen Hall Park to the H Street Bridge. We are coordinating with the Corps with their project manager. Their project is actually go, or their project encompasses our entire project footprint. The amount of work that they're going to be doing is actually going to negate our mitigation effectively. They're going to be removing all of the vegetation that would have been impacted by our project with their project. We're working with them to ensure that our timing is correct so that they can get in, install their improvements, and then we can follow immediately after and be able to pave the trail without getting in each other's ways.
What was our rationale for not putting bikes on the top of the levee?
That was a very long conversation that we had with the American River Flood Control District. The Flood Control District has a formal policy that bike trails are no longer allowed on top of levees. There's a procedure to request a variance from them, but by and large, they were unwilling to grant that variance. And we approached them many times for this. After we went through and published our draft mitigated negative declaration document, which was the lower-level document we did before the CIR, we were finally able to convince them that in one short stretch of this project, there were enough, there was a combination of factors that was adequate to grant a variance for placing the trail on the top of levee where there was no other feasible alternative. But they see the available levee maintenance tow, or the levee maintenance road at the toe of the levee as a feasible alternative location for this trail and aren't willing to grant that additional variance for the remaining roughly mile and a quarter of the trail. Or, sorry, two and a quarter miles of the trail.
And finally, I was taking copious notes as people were speaking to see what the objections might be. Finally, the maintenance of the trail, how is that being addressed?
So, overall, currently in the unpaved condition, the American River Flood Control District is responsible for all maintenance on the levee and in the, all, everything from the, basically, property owner fences to the water. When the trail gets built, the Flood Control District would still maintain all maintenance responsibilities for the levee, so all mowing that's happening on the levee side, everything top of levee, everything land side of the levee. They would still be responsible from the outside of our trail to the water. What the city would be responsible for maintaining is the trail footprint itself, which consists of a graded shoulder on one side, the pavement, and then a graded shoulder on the other side. And that would be covered under our Public Works Department. We actually have a group within our maintenance department that's responsible for maintenance of all of our paved trails in the city.
Okay. Could you give me a second? I wanna make sure I covered everybody's comments.
Sure.
I think we covered it all. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I also wanna thank all the speakers who came out here today from the neighborhood and with concerns and regarding the issue. And some of the, some folks mentioned how some damage to the levee has occurred and that, and that rightly so is something we, this council is going to be looking at. And again, on a more focused level, and one that we should be aware of, but I, but it is separate and apart from this particular item that we're asking about. My council district actually is adjacent to where the bike rail, bike trail stops. And so, and it, and it goes, and it has paving on both sides, from J Street all the way until you get to Watt Avenue under the city limits. It has bike lanes on the bottom of the levee as well, so adjacent to the waterfront as well. And I've lived on both sides of, of that levee, adjacent to the, the levee as well. And both on University Avenue or on the La Riviera side of the trail. And, and my experience in having ridden up there and, and using the trail is that the difference in, in folks experiencing homelessness is no different on, on either side, whether it is. I mean, that issue is something that is, one, that is affecting all of our cities and all parts of the areas. But one thing that is clear, and I've, is that, that the lack of connectivity affects our system. And I've seen many folks who, who And I've seen many folks who, who use adapted bicycles, who would never be able to experience that, those parts of the levee but for the paving, and you see that throughout the entire trail. You also have, at least in that area, Campus Commons and whatnot, a, let's just say, a senior population by choice who looks for paved areas, in many cases as well, that don't get the chance to experience all these areas. So, accessibility, I think, is an important part for our river. Now, we do have trails out in the area that are also where some of our folks who you, who are, who like equestrian experiences are out there using them, and we have that combination. And I think that we can make that happen. Also, you know, I reached out to our Flood Control Board member who represents the area, who also supports the River Trail, and I understand that the integrity of the option of on top of the trail is, is, is one that they don't support. And, and my understanding is because they're trying to manage the integrity of the trail. Is that correct?
So, the position of the Flood Board has always been that in order to safely perform their maintenance operations, it is very difficult for them to share that levee top with other users. So, they're seeking a way to separate users on, or from their maintenance operations on the levee top.
Good, good, good to know. But I have meant, I know that they've even restricted now what we plant on trees or whatnot on the levee as well?
Yeah. Their rationale behind that is, they want to maintain a uniform vegetation on the entire levee to make inspection that much easier. They want to essentially make it so that anything that appears out of place shouldn't be there.
Okay, good.
They also have policies or requests that they want, or they want to minimize tree planting, things like that, within a certain distance of the bottom of levee so that they can see any seepage issues or anything like that that may be coming through in a flood event.
Okay, very good. So, I think, you know, the, of our Flood Control folks are saying, you know, this is the best approach. They're supportive of this approach, and, and just having been, seen the experience on, on both sides, I think, I'm, and I was willing to second the motion here to continue the conversation. I'm ready to support the item. But thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, these are, these are some of the toughest ones that come before the council, where the council member that's been working on it ends up having to recuse themselves and is probably the person with the most expertise here. That being said, you know, you do the best you can as a council member to weigh through the materials, and there are, I mean, there are people here who are speaking tonight, actually on both sides, that are people that I normally would turn to on this type of issue. Betsy's definitely one of them. Steve is also definitely one of them. That are people I would call to say, what do you think about this? What's your community thinking? I have a lot of familiarity with working with levees, a lot, and I don't quite buy the part where they can't put the bike trail on top because there are bike trails all over the tops of the levees in my district. However, I have a different Flood Control entity. American River Flood Control is not my entity, obviously. I have already 1,000, and I wouldn't, you know, I don't know structurally how different those levees are. Mine obviously have slurry walls and are a little bit more intensive. Perhaps that makes it easier to put more structure on top. I don't know. I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt. The part that bothers me the most about this is the vegetation piece, and I think even the proponents of the trail acknowledge that the current plan has some pretty strong impacts on trees and vegetation. So, while I agree with Councilmember Hanson that from a legal standpoint, I don't, the legal conclusion in this EIR is sound and doesn't give us a lot of room, but I do think we would be remiss to not take the opportunity to talk about a couple of ways that we might improve the project. The best part about having community input like this is that you do get an opportunity to sort of push the edges of the envelope and see if you can do better. And I would encourage our staff to work with this group about where we might be able to preserve some of the vegetation. I've been in this fight too. In fact, we had this fight federally. At one point, the federal government told us we had to clear all of our levees of trees, all of them. And as you know, Sacramento led the whole country in fighting back on that and saying, it's not true. The trees actually strengthen the levees. And so, I want to be clear that I'm going to support this EIR, but I would like staff to work with the folks that have come in tonight and figure out where there is an opportunity to preserve some of the vegetation and the experience that's unique to River Park and this precise trail. And I assume you're going to be keeping some of the unpaved components on the side. While I agree that forever changes the dynamic, I think it does open the trail to some additional uses, which there's, there is quite a bit of support for. It does support the Vision Zero goals that Steve and I espouse at every chance we get, but I think they're right. It doesn't do us much good to put $6 million down on infrastructure towards Vision Zero if we don't maintain it. And now is the time for us to make the commitment to them that we will maintain it. Who do they call when it's not maintained? We need to be clear. If the American River Flood Control is in charge now, but it's going to be us specifically who us, is it Public Works? Is it, how are we going to, and you answered the question for Councilmember Carr about maintenance, but, I mean, park rangers need to be privy to this? There needs to be some help in transitioning this community as we do this, that they get exactly what they need and that their fears don't come to reality, that we do everything in our capacity to make sure that we protect them as this pathway is built. That is the most fair and reasonable ask they could possibly make of us. Sacramento is beautiful, and I have so many great memories. Anybody who's grown up here knows all about Paradise Beach, right? And I have been there many, many times. I went to Sac Hi, and that was our, definitely our spot. And when Steve put up that picture, they all just, memories just all washed back over me. And what a beautiful, beautiful corner of Sacramento you all get to live in. And I think we need to do what we can to preserve that, even though I think this EIR moves forward today, and it's important, and I do think Jeff's done a great job of finding funding for something that he believes to be a true amenity in his district, and we have heard a lot of support and a lot of people opposed, and that's always hard to weigh out when you're sitting on this dais. The idea of access is huge. I want to make sure that staff works with these folks. Is there a way that we can commit to doing that without including any changes, but making sure that SARAH and Betsy and the community that are feeling impacted know exactly who their contacts can be, what the park ranger plan is, and how they might, how we might try harder, take a second look at some of the trees and vegetation that could be preserved?
And I think, as project manager, first off, regarding the design of this, my contact information is readily available. We have a project website.
Okay, but I'm not talking about you as a project designer. I'm talking about who is going to maintain this for them. The minute that you, that we're out there, they have fears and concerns. Who will they call? It won't be you. It'll be a park ranger. It'll be someone in Public Works. It'll be somebody who's responsible for maintaining it, not the person responsible for planning and building it. So, you don't have to have that answer right now, obviously, we're at the planning, but they need to have that answer before day one of the path. That's all I'm asking. You make the commitment to do the outreach to this community to make sure they have the contacts that they need for the park ranger, for their area. You hear what I'm saying, right, Judy? And, and their maintenance folks for that specific area, yeah?
And we're happy to make that commitment.
That's great. And also the tree and vegetation component. And then lastly, one thing I just want to say, because the structural integrity of these levees and how folks who are experiencing homelessness are engaging with our levees is a massive problem for me, too. I just fought six years of my life for a billion dollars to fix levees and get out of a building moratorium in Natomas for 110,000 people, only to turn around and see people take out huge swaths of those levees. And I want you to know that we're not just sitting on our hands on that. There is a effort moving forward, and I believe the American River Flood Control Group has helped, RD 1,000 has spearheaded it, though they're a tiny little agency, and Jim Cooper has a piece of legislation right now, and I'm sure the mayor's probably helped with it, working on it too. Didn't make it through last session, but I feel confident it will this time. And it protects the integrity of levees and makes it so that you can't dig into them, and gives us a little bit more enforcement leg, helps us with the Boise decision where there's damage being done to critical infrastructure that's important for flood control, and we'll continue to bird dog that and push it forward for all of us that live behind levee walls. So, appreciate everyone who came out tonight. I hope that the project is bettered by your input.
Thank you. Thank you to all the members, and thank you to the public. A couple of final comments here. It just strikes me, on one procedural item, recusing Jeff Harris here, that maybe we ought to think through under the doctrine, be careful what you wish for, because if this is approved tonight, I think you're going to want your council member in the lead here to fight for exactly what Councilmember Ashby and other members were talking about, how to actually organize and put together a funded maintenance program so that some of the fears that have been expressed tonight do not have to be the reality. So, I would suggest you find a way to get him back in, in the game on this issue, because he obviously, one, he's good, and two, he fought for $6 million to get the thing done. He knows how to get the resources to actually help with the maintenance piece of it. This is a hard one for me, and I'll tell you, in my four years or three-plus years, I haven't, I haven't had many of these. I mean, mostly big policy, and it reminds me of my old days on the city council where it seemed like weekly that there were these sorts of, these sorts of issues. Look, we're fighting for, we're fighting to maximize access to the River Parkway every, every place and everywhere that we can. And, and I think this project is consistent with that vision, with the Sacramento River vision, with ensuring that as many people have access to our Parkway as possible. And I hear the opposition, mostly, not exclusively, but mostly discussing and being concerned about the homeless problem.
Nature, nature.
No, I heard you, ma'am. No, I heard your testimony about nature and the wonder of nature. I listened to all of it. I'm just trying to, for myself, summarize the bulk of the opposition, what it is I heard, and I don't think there has been any proof about causation, about paving increasing homelessness. And somebody said it was the gentleman who put forward the letter, Mr. Harriman. And again, we haven't double-checked your exact statistic here in terms of the 3% and the 6%, but the fact that the homeless population along the river is mostly concentrated near social service facilities and near where there's access to services, and I'm not sure that paving changes that. And in a broader sense, I just must tell you, this is not a homeless debate, but it seems like it enters the conversation at all points. This council is fighting fiercely to create more opportunities for people to come inside. And I have publicly said, you can read the Los Angeles Times op-ed of July 2019, that I believe when we create the capacity as a city and/or as a state, that we ought to obligate people to come indoors, even if they don't want to. That's what I believe. But we are consistently confronted with, and I don't think any of you came here tonight to testify the way and mention the word homeless, fall into the category of NIMBY. I don't know what's in your mind, but I did not take it that way. I did not take it that way. But we are constantly confronted with the duality of people rightfully saying, please do something about this issue, and at the same time, we are confronted consistently with the plea, just please make sure that it's out of our sight. And I cannot govern based upon the fear or the worst-case scenario. It's our job, and Jeff Harris, you bring him back, to mitigate the concern, and I, and I know he'd be committed to that. We'd all be committed to it on the maintenance side, and on an aggressive homeless intervention program that takes people from the River Parkway indoors. And again, personally, if I have my way at the state level, when we provide enough capacity, I would obligate people to come in. I don't think being out on the streets or on the river is a civil right. But I won't deny this EIR based upon, I won't call it an irrational fear, because it's the real-life experience of people in terms of the impact of this problem in our community. But the answer is not to deny greater river access because we fear that the homeless problem might get worse. So, I support this. I respect all points of view on this and appreciate the civil dialogue here tonight. Let's call the roll on the item, please.
Councilmember Ashby.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. To be continued. Are there council ideas and questions? I'm sorry, what?
[inaudible]
Okay. Councilman Jennings, council ideas and questions?
These are, these are the non-announcements. Yes?
Yes, council ideas and questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, if you, wait just a sec, please. If people could please leave quietly, we still have some business, and if you could please take the conversation outside, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Yes, please.
I first want to do an AB 1234 report.
Yeah.
On our two-day trip to San Diego with SECOG, we had the opportunity to see some innovative bus and rail stations, some transit-oriented development, some housing, transportation parks, and shopping, all in one place, which eliminated a lot of cars and other forms of transportation. So, I, it was a great trip. I think we learned a lot to bring something back to our region here in Sacramento and the six regions that SECOG represents. So, I did want to let you know that I went on that trip, and it was a great trip. Learned a lot, brought a lot back. And then for our announcements for District 7, we have office hours in the Mack Road Valley High Community Center on Thursday, February 6th, at 6:00 PM. We also have it at the Robbie Waters Library on February 13th, which is the following Thursday, at 6:00 PM, and this is bringing City Hall to the neighborhood. We also have a tree planting opportunity for those looking for volunteer opportunities. It's going to take place at Conlon Park on Saturday, February 29th, and if you'd like to get involved in helping us to plant trees, you can call the number 916-808-7192, or you can contact our office directly in order to sign up for this great opportunity. And then finally, earlier tonight, we had a resolution for Rosal Parks, and I just want you to know from my office, I want you to check out our Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram pages to learn about the inspirational stories highlighting different African-Americans throughout the city's history of the city of Sacramento. So, important African-Americans here in the city of Sacramento. We will be highlighting one every day of the month of February, which is Black History Month. We're doing, having a lot of fun. We're learning a lot about people that we didn't know before, and it's making us feel proud as Sacramento's
It's great.
that we have an opportunity to recognize these people. So, we hope you enjoy us doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. We'll do that. Appreciate it. Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually an announcement for District 2. Councilmember Warren had to leave a little early, but he asked me to announce that the Greater Sacramento Urban League is having their annual Think Up Diversity Job Fair tomorrow, February 5th. It's actually in Councilmember Hanson's district downtown on L Street at the Hyatt Regency from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Apparently, they have over 45 employers there, some job coaching and interview training and resume help. So, folks who are looking for a job could head over to the Hyatt Regency tomorrow morning and get some information. That's it, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association and the Oak Park Neighborhood Association are going to be holding a joint Aggie Square and Stockton Revitalization Meeting on Thursday, February 6th, at 5:30 PM at the Oak Park Community Center. We're going to have not only the representatives from UC Davis campus here in Sacramento talk about the developments of Aggie Square, but also our city staff. Councilmember Chenier and I will also be there to answer questions, and also our staff that have been working on the mayor's workforce development plan.
Workforce Collaborative.
There we go. What's the, Workforce Collaborative, and... Workforce collaborative, and another, a lot of fun ideas. So encourage everyone to be there, Thursday, 5:30 p.m., Oak Park Community Center. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. A month or so ago, we had a meeting with the city attorney and our police department to discuss potential lawsuits as a result of Martin versus Boise. And I understand we made some progress on how we're going to approach that. As soon as possible, I'd like to get together for the council to hear how we're going to handle that situation and what that bubble looks like and what we'll be able to enforce around these centers. This Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Pennell Center, we start the 31st Annual Sweet Potato Festival. There'll be sweet potatoes there for everyone, I think.
I'm there. I'm judging.
We have a judge right here. Not too late to enter the contest if you want to make a sweet potato pie. That's going to be this Saturday at the Pennell Center. I think the judging starts at noon, right? So come on out and have a good time and get a sweet potato. And it's not too early to alert everyone on this dais that a week from Friday is Valentine's Day. Start thinking about it. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. We're not quite there yet, but I want to do an adjourned memory. We had one of our pastors in Oak Park pass away this week, Pastor Hollins from All Nations Church. He's been ill for about a month, but just a great, great asset to the community, well-loved by his parishioners. The church is over on 39th and Broadway. His son, Ike, has taken over as pastor about a month ago, as the pastor senior was getting ill. We worked together quite a bit on the Arbor Senior Housing Project, which a lot of his parishioners moved into. That was a big thing for him. He was looking to build more affordable housing as well. So just wanted to adjourn in his memory. I believe that the services will be at St. Paul this coming Tuesday at 11 o'clock in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's hear from the public on items not on the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nine speakers. The first is Charles Gwen, then Valerie Chavez, then Wanda Apple. Charles, Valerie, Wanda, I don't see those.
Okay.
Rebecca Sandoval, Leticia Huerta, then Raul Huerta.
Please all come up. Ms. Sandoval.
So the first is Rebecca Sandoval, then Leticia Huerta.
Ms. Sandoval, you first.
Valerie Chavez. Okay.
Good evening. As you know, I'm trustee of Twin Rivers School Board, and as a trustee, I received a surrender of a shelter proposed by Councilman Harris. I asked for a resolution of my board opposing a shelter 13 yards from one of our elementary schools. Councilman Harris came to our board when he learned that I was going to be proposing this resolution and told us, no matter what the school board says, the city's going to do what they want anyway. That was disturbing. My resolution was scheduled to be voted on January 28th and was tabled after some members of the board were lobbied to ask that it be tabled for a January 29th meeting, which was held in the community at Rio Tera Junior High School. At that meeting, over 250 members from the community came, and almost everyone there was opposing the shelter. At that time, our assistant superintendent, Kristen Coats, read a statement from our superintendent. I asked for permission to read that I'm reading that to you today. I'm the associate superintendent of Twin Rivers Unified School District. I'm here tonight on behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Steve Martinez. Twin Rivers absolutely supports the homeless population. We do this every day in our schools with wraparound services and caring adults. We do not support the location. Dr. Martinez has been communing with Mayor Steinberg, who started the initiative to get people inside. Twin Rivers is committed to working with the mayor on other locations to do just that. I want to reiterate Dr. Martinez's position. We support the homeless. We do not support the location. There was something that happened, and that was the, Councilman Harris reported to the papers, we have 29 homeless students at our school. We dealt with lunch school shaming. Now our children, are they looking at each other? Are you the homeless one? Are you the homeless one? And that has also...
For your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you.
So Valerie Chavez, then Leticia Huerta.
Hello, my name is Valerie Chavez, and I'm reading this statement on behalf of Stacy Furpo, Principal of Garden Valley Elementary. As the principal of Garden Valley Elementary, I do not support the proposed housing development across the street from our school site. I feel there are other locations that are more appropriate and must be pursued. Thank you for your time and your consideration, Stacy Furpo, Principal, Garden Valley Elementary. As I stated, I'm Valerie Chavez. I'm a proud mother of four, in which three of my children currently attend Garden Valley. We all share the same compassion for those women and children being impacted by the homelessness. But our jobs as parents and as a community is to limit the liabilities to our children. Without judgment, we need to be able to separate our desire to help those suffering with the importance of maximizing our students' safety. If this proposal is approved, we open ourselves up to a number of circumstantial consequences. So I please beg of you, please do not place our children in potential danger.
Next speaker is Leticia Huerta, then Raul Huerta.
Just real quick, I'm going to be translating for her, since she's Spanish-speaking.
In that instance, do we double the time for the translation, please? Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Leticia Huerta, y represento a la comunidad de Garden Valley desde hace 20 años. He trabajado como voluntaria por ocho años en el distrito de Twin Rivers de tiempo completo, y dos años en el grupo de niños especiales en el programa de inclusión en el distrito de Natomas. Uno de los puntos más importantes en la inclusión de cualquier niño en su escuela, viviente y comunidad, es su privacidad.
Good afternoon. My name is Leticia Huerta. I've been assisting Garden Valley Elementary as a volunteer and also work with disabled One of my strongest points is the education and the well-being of the children in the community.
Al parecer, esto es algo sin importancia para representante Jeff Harris, ya que en su presentación pública el miércoles pasado, él mencionó algún número de niños indigentes en el distrito de Twin Rivers, violando así las reglas de privacidad.
Apparently, this issue is not important for Representative Jeff Harrison, being that he publicly announced last Wednesday that the cabin, that there is homeless children in our community violating their privacy in the district.
Él no mencionó que el distrito de Twin Rivers es el cuarto más grande de Sacramento, con aproximadamente 27,000 estudiantes. Así que el número total de niños indigentes, el cual mencionó, equivaldría al 3%.
He also mentioned the amount of students that are homeless in our community, which is incorrect. Apparently, at this moment, we have 3%? 3% of the homeless community, not saying, in the Twin Rivers district.
Él dijo que este porcentaje es drástico y por qué no hacer algo por ellos, el cual me parece excelente. Sin embargo, la comunidad no entendemos por qué él quiere exponer a estos niños a un programa de tipo transicional en donde se violará la privacidad de todos estos niños.
So he's talking about, Jeff Harrison is talking about the amount of students that are in our school. So, me perdí. I'm sorry.
I want to finish. Esto me parece excelente que él quiera ayudar a estos niños.
This seems quite excellent, that he wants to help our children.
Sin embargo, la comunidad pensamos que por qué él quiere exponer a estos niños.
However, the community wants to know, why does he want to expose our children?
Donde se violará la privacidad de estos niños.
Where they would violate the privacy of our children.
Ya que toda la comunidad escolar sabrá cuál es su hogar y las condiciones de este mismo.
Being that the whole community will know where they live and their status of housing.
Lo que me parece es que el señor Jeff Harris solo quiere exponer a estos niños y a estas mujeres, poniéndolos justo enfrente de una escuela primaria elemental.
Which makes me believe that Jeff only wants to exploit these children and mothers to let the whole community know where they live and their status.
Estos niños podrían ser transportados en autobuses escolares a su hogar y a su escuela, y de esta manera mantener su privacidad, ya que es el principal punto para inclusión de estos niños.
Is Huerta, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Give you four...
Cuatro minutos.
Cuatro minutos doble.
So can I still?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Raul Huerta, then John Cruz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I know Eric Guerra understands Spanish, so I hope that he relays the rest of what my wife was trying to convey. But I'm here this evening to talk to you about the city-owned vacant lot, where Councilmember Harris is proposing to place 49 transitional homeless cabins directly in front of the elementary's school. You have heard and you will hear some of the real concerns that we have as parents for the placement of these cabins, and I hope that you don't disregard the comments that we make. It is true that the vacant lot already attracts a lot of homeless to set up homeless camps. And it is true that the vacant lot is often filled with garbage and debris. But do you know why this is? It's because of the city's inability and unwillingness to maintain the city-owned vacant lot and enforce its own zoning and municipal code. My neighbors and myself call and submit online requests to the 311 service every week concerning the debris and the individuals who set up yard sales every weekend, recently even during the weekday. As residents, we're only allowed three yard sales per year, but these individuals can set up yard sales every weekend and leave their garbage and debris on that city-owned lot. Recently, a couple of our neighbors were told by the 311 operator that they have been told that there would be no enforcement on this lot. This is appalling, especially because this happens at a time when Councilmember Harris is pursuing his proposed cabins on this city-owned lot. We've reached out to code enforcement for an explanation and have yet to receive a response. So we're asking you, why is the city not enforcing its own municipal code? Show us a resolution where the council has voted to stop enforcing its own municipal code and zoning code. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jasso, our assistant city manager in charge of economic development, will meet with you right now to talk to you about that enforcement issue, okay?
Next speaker is John Cruz, then Mark Lomda, then Christina Ambrose.
Having worked for nearly 30 years as a nurse at the UCSD Medical Center with our local homeless population, I can say that my passion to improve their health and quality of life here in Sacramento remains relentless. My family has participated in several homeless outreach activities throughout the city and have seen their plight. As a retired Army nurse, I participated in several stand-down events for our homeless vets, envisioned one day the same type of event for non-vets here in Sacramento, to help mitigate the risk for chronic homelessness. Benjamin Franklin, one of our founding fathers, said it best, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." My hope and prayer is that our community as a whole and this council considers committing the necessary resources to addressing the root cause of homelessness, which includes several contributing factors, such as illiteracy, unemployment, the lack of affordable housing, drugs, and alcohol addiction, along with mental health disorders. I realize that establishing transitional housing units for women and children is a valiant attempt to rectify the problem and resolve the situation with regards to homelessness. However, I do feel that in and of itself, it may be simply placing a Band-Aid on what appears to be a much deeper wound. I understand that the efforts will be made to address the issues previously mentioned that perhaps led to their homelessness, but I'm deeply concerned that these, that those issues they have, they will still have and will remain as they enter into the program until such time when they complete the program requirements and are able to move forward. My community of Garden Valley can passionately embrace the quest to find solutions to helping the homeless, but are vehemently troubled by the idea of having transitional housing units directly across the street from the school. Some of the health concerns we have include what risk mitigation strategies will be implemented to safeguard residents from hazards, secondary to close-quarter environments such as meningitis, tuberculosis, pneumonia, flu, hepatitis, MRSA, lice, bedbugs, scabies, the common cold, and animal-borne diseases as it relates to the canine or feline companions. Will there be mandatory immunizations?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mark Lomda, and then Christina Ambrose. Mark here. Christina? Mr. Mayor, I have no more public comment.
Christina, there's Christina right here.
Is Christina here? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Christina Ambrose. I've been living in the Natomas, South Natomas, for over 25 years. I'm very passionate about where I live, and I adore and love the children that go to the school. That is why I'm here, to present issues that I think are very critical and necessary to address. There are children that walk to the school, five-year-olds, that I see myself walking that I would never dare to let my children walk that young to school. But there is, and that's a reality. I feel that if we have a homeless shelter for women and children, even though there are women and children that might need our help, I think we need to find a more suitable location for them, where they have the dignity to have the privacy of no one knowing where they live, having a bus transport them to the school, and still have the dignity of having a roof over their head. When I addressed this to Jeff Harrison last week on Wednesday, I asked him publicly, would you send your child to this school if you knew that this was the situation? His first answer was no. He did not address it any other way. His answer was no. And then he followed by saying, I would first look into it. Well, what is it that he needs to look into? The hazards that we are currently addressing? I heard earlier in the meetings that there was a lot of issues with schools, people getting run over, there's, you know, a lot of issues with children and homeless. And it seems like we're getting both worlds together in one. We're getting children that are being forced to live under homeless shelters, and I don't think that is the solution. And I have proof here that both the superintendent and the principal have signed that they oppose this project, and they want to find a better solution for everybody, especially for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for all your testimony. If there's nothing further... No, what's that? Nope. This is all we had, signed up with the city clerk, Ms. Sandoval. Thank you. We've given plenty of opportunity for people to be heard tonight. We're adjourned.